All right, so this is a report on the cost of residential development in San Jose. I think everybody knows why we're here. We've got a housing crisis, and we've got to find a way to get housing built, and high costs make it challenging. So we're going to learn more. And thank you to our esteemed panelists for helping us in all the ways you've lent your expertise. Who's taking away? Is it Rosalynn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, members of the public, Rosalynn Huey, Deputy City Manager. I'm joined this afternoon by Nancy Klein, our Director of the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, Jared Ferguson, our Housing Catalyst, Rachel Van Der Veen, Deputy Director of Housing. In the audience, we also have Housing Director Jackie Morales-Verandt, and we have Michael Brio and Chris Burton from Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. We are also very pleased to be joined by a guest panel who I'll be introducing in just a moment. So today, we are pleased to be with you to share the analysis from the updated report on the cost of residential development for both market rate and affordable housing here in the city of San Jose. Previously in 2018 and in 2019, the City Council held study sessions, but now we think it's very important to share the updated information and to understand the changes in the market since the pandemic, and really to understand how these dynamics can be barriers to housing construction here in the city. So we have a lot of information to share with you today. You'll hear about multifamily construction costs and valuations. You'll hear about developers' views of risks and returns. You'll hear about affordable housing finance. And then you'll hear about what things the City Council as policymakers can and cannot control in this market. We thought it was important to provide this study session to you. As in the coming weeks, actually on November 15th, we're going to be bringing two housing items to you. First, the transition of the Housing Crisis Work Plan, which was first approved back in 2018 by the City Council, and talking about transitioning that work. And then secondly, we'll be bringing an item regarding the Residential High-Rise Program for your action. So we are very excited to be joined today by a panel comprised of the Urban Land Institute, or ULI, San Francisco District Executive Board members. We have Libby Seifel, Eric Tow, who is the current Board Chair. We have Drew Hudasek, who is the past Chair of the Board. And we're very excited to also be joined by Nevada Merriman, who is Director of Policy at Mintin Housing. So first, we'll hear from our panel. There will be opportunities for the City Council to ask questions and engage in discussion, after which we have a presentation by city staff. So Jared and Rachel will lead us through that presentation. Again, there'll be another opportunity for the City Council to ask questions and have discussion, followed by public comment. And before I hand this over to Eric, I just want to share how the city is very appreciative of our continued partnership with ULI San Francisco. They've helped us on a number of different projects. They've actually provided training to many city staff a couple of years ago. They've participated in a technical advisory panel on parking, and also provided an urban plan workshop for public officials. So we're very thankful for this partnership. Want to give a big thanks and shout out to their Executive Director Natalie Sandoval, and also their Director Joy Wu, who is also in the audience today. There you are. So with that, Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to Eric and the panel.
Thank you, Rosalynn. I'm Eric Tow. I am the current Chair of the San Francisco ULI District Council. I'm glad it's not a full house because we don't have all the answers for you today. What we're here to do is to work with staff, with Rosalynn, and with you all to try to understand better the challenges, and hopefully by understanding the challenges, some solutions to help solve our housing production crisis right now. A little bit more about ULI. Urban Land Institute San Francisco is the name of our District Council. We are more than just San Francisco. We serve the entire Bay Area. We have some of the best and brightest people in real estate, getting together, learning best practices regionally, locally, and nationally. We have many, many different programs to try to help share and gather information to arrive at some of those best practices. Today, joining me, whoop, I've got to learn to use this thing. There we go. That's some of the things we do. And Rosalynn touched upon it. We've already done technical assistance panels for the city of San Jose. And again, we continue always to share and gather information about best practices for real estate development and housing development. Our members are comprised by a diverse group of professionals in the development real estate industry, from production to consulting to finance, design. We talked about what we offer, the public agencies. Obviously, staff helped put this slide in to make a larger pitch to you all to continue to work with ULI. Today, as I introduce myself, my name is Eric Tow. I'm a managing partner at L37. We've done housing, multifamily housing in the Bay Area, San Francisco, San Jose, Oakland. Joining us, joining me today is Libby Seifel, founder and President of Seifel Consulting. Libby has advised over 100 different public agencies with a focus on multifamily housing and an emphasis on affordable housing. Also joining me is Drew Hudasek. He's the Chief Investment Officer of Saris Regis. I think many of you know him. Saris Regis has been around since 1993 as a company. Their founders have been doing this for much longer, and they've built over 15,000 units of housing in California. So everybody in San Jose, City Council now probably have become experts in how complex, how difficult, and how costly it is to produce housing. But I think we still scratch our heads. Why is it so costly? Why is it so complex? What we're going to do today is we're going to try to unpack everything. We're going to show you the elements and the segments and the pieces that make it challenging. And then we're going to take each of those pieces and try to analyze it. And our experts are going to try to explore levers and tools we can use by understanding these pieces to try to start solving the larger holistic problem of housing production. And with that, I'd like to pass it on to Drew Hudasek.
Great, thank you, Eric. And thank you, Mayor, members of the Council, staff, and the city of San Jose for having us back. We've done this a bit before, and we expect a lot of Q and A after our presentation here, and happy to answer your questions. So, you know, what are we going to cover today? One thing we want to acknowledge upfront, you know, the four of us on this panel, at some level, are part of the development industry or are developers ourselves. But we're, we're part of a much bigger process. Development of any kind involves the city or jurisdiction that's approving a development, involves the community, it involves market forces that, you know, push and pull on the need for housing, where to put it, the financial aspects behind it. And, you know, we are just one piece of that process. And as we present information today, you know, one of the things we want to give you are the tools, hopefully, to make decisions a few weeks from now, months, years, et cetera. And there's a lot of different ways to present the information. At one level, anything in the development world can be a number on a spreadsheet. And at the under end of the spectrum, you know, we know that these things have real effects on people's lives and the shelter over their head. And there's a, there's a middle ground. So if, if some of the information seems a little bit calloused in the way that it's converted to numbers, that's just one way to look at it that ultimately needs to be converted into public policy. And that's way above our pay grade, which is why we're, we're sitting here in the box, as Rosalynn mentioned to us. So we're going to cover how developers and investors look at risk and return at a broad brush level, get into the costs and valuations of multifamily housing, and then what I'll call Chapter Three, really discussing what are some of the levers that you may or may not be able to pull depending on policy decisions. So risk and return. You know, there are many, many types of real estate today. Obviously, we're focused on housing. We're going to address a little bit of affordable. Mostly, we are talking not about for sale housing, but more often multifamily rental housing. It's a type of real estate that produces an income stream. And ultimately, that's the way, you know, the investors and the financial markets are going to look at it. And I touched on this a little bit before, but there seems to be a public perception that developers get to write the rules, and that is the furthest thing from the truth, right? We, we understand there are market forces that are so much stronger than we are. And I, you know, I try to lighten this up a little bit, put a picture of the New Coke. You know, a lot of people did a lot of research and thought that New Coke was going to be a fantastic idea, and then the market spoke. I think most of us in the room remember that, and probably most people at home watching remember that. But it's just an illustration that, you know, we can think a building is the greatest idea in the world, or the worst, and we're not always right. The market speaks. So when we talk about risk and return, you know, we as developers really, we have our views, but, but the financial markets and our investors speak very loudly. And of course, every investor, as we see in that cloud up at the top, tries to get the biggest return they can with the smallest amount of risk. But the markets are competitive, of course. So the investors that typically put money in our projects, and they can include, you know, large pension funds, endowments, big banks and investment banks, CalSTRS and CalPERS, as a matter of fact, are some of the largest investors in California real estate. Investors often talk about real estate in these four buckets, Core, Core Plus, et cetera. But really, the first three on the lower risk end are all referring to existing buildings and things that you may or may not need to do to improve them. The opportunity piece is really where development falls, and that, illustrated by this, this diagram, is on the most risky end of the spectrum. And then when you talk about the types of what we call the food groups in real estate, apartments do tend to be on the lower risk end of the spectrum, and the theory being that when you have housing that you're asking rent for, at some level, and of course, in California, we think about the high cost of housing and not having enough, it is the fact there are markets across the country where, you know, the rents move up and down depending on how much that housing is needed. But as an owner of apartments, you can always lower the price and find somebody who needs to live there. As an owner of things like office buildings, hotel rooms, et cetera, on the riskier end of the spectrum, when the market doesn't need it, it doesn't need it at any price. So, you know, when I talk about the community that developers are dealing with, this is one illustration, you could easily turn this diagram on its head and put the city at the center, and have all of your stakeholders around, including the development community as one of the spokes or one of the nodes. But this is just to show there are so many different voices that are speaking to bring a development project together, and we have to listen to all of them. You know, we, we like to use the analogy of movie production. And in the movie business, and, and yeah, we threw in a hometown slide. We're not, we're not above that. The, the movie producer brings the team together, right? And they have some expertise, but they're hiring the screenwriters, the directors, they're bringing the money together. That is exactly what a developer is doing. We may have anywhere from 20 to 100 consultants or parties that we're dealing with on any one development project. And the more, the riskier, obviously. So now I'm going to hand it over to Libby in a moment, and we're going to talk a bit about the costs that are associated with producing that housing. There's a couple of different ways we're going to look at it. The first one here is what makes up all of the money that builds a building? And so the three simplified buckets here are the debt, the investor equity, and the developer equity. And typically, developers are going out and bringing in other equity investors. And in theory, the equity is at risk, and if the project goes bad, equity can be lost. If the project goes well, the equity investors and the developer profit. But that is not always the case. This little diagram here, and this, this is a hometown nod for myself. I grew up a Giants fan, I hate to say, but my coworker threw this one in. When things go really well, you build something illustrated by the cost on the left, and it's worth its value, which is hopefully larger, more on the right. The bank gets paid back the same amount of debt, but again, the investor and the developer benefit. When things don't go well, illustrated by this left and right, cost on the left, value on the right, it's the equity that loses. The developer and the investor lose together. The bank still gets their money back. Then you have times like the Great Financial Crisis. And this is when value drops so precipitously, or somebody has made a New Coke-type of decision, where the project is worth not just so little that all the equity is wiped out, but that the debt is impacted. This happened during the Great Financial Crisis in '08, '09, and '10. And one of the tough messages these days, and a few of us have been at some conferences over the last couple of weeks, all the talk of inflation, all the talk of economic uncertainty is absolutely hitting the real estate markets, and it is causing more uncertainty. There's nothing that investors hate more than uncertainty. And so we're at a moment in time where there may be some policy levers that you could pull and still not have an effect. But one of the messages we want to get across today is that we're going to be talking about policy decisions that you make for the long term, and hopefully it tees up the city so that when conditions are, are ripe, then the, the right kind of development will come into play. So I'm going to pass it to Libby here in a moment. This is a different way of looking at the cost, not just the money that makes it up, but what are the, the layers of cost in those same projects? And it's no mistake that we've highlighted the box that says fees and extractions, and, or exactions, excuse me. The, the fees and exactions can be anything and everything from, you know, park fees, development fees, and all sorts of, of benefits that come with cost. And we certainly have to acknowledge, you know, everything that a development project can entail has both a cost and a benefit. And that policy decision, again, falls into your lap.
So building on what Drew just said, so every fee or exaction, for example, requiring an off-site infrastructure improvement to serve affordable housing or market rate housing, has a cost associated with it. That cost has to get baked into the pro forma, the development budget, and it adds to the total cost. And if the market is good, as Drew just said, development can move forward with new projects, and it can pay for a lot of these costs. It can fully cover park fees and amenities and community benefits and all of the things that we really value and think are so important. But if project costs go up to a certain point and rent and values don't, projects die. And it really is often like the straw that breaks the camel's back. Even though one, one of those things individually isn't the issue, it's all of them added together. And the last bullet is really important is that when the market is good, it's fabulous, but they're typically short in duration, whereas you've got to be thinking for the long term, particularly if you're doing multifamily housing in California, just the entitlement process, the construction process, the lease-up process, that is five years minimum often. And so you're looking, you've got to make it through usually more than one cycle. And it's very important not to miss that window. So we want to talk about, conceptually, something that, that two sort of, the bookends of this, building on what we said earlier. So at the top, at the green, when everything is working well, you have a developer margin or return, also called profit. But the reason why this is also called margin and return is it has to deal with those contingencies. It has to deal with the fact that, that both investors need to get their returns, but that things don't always happen the way you think they're going to happen, hence the term margin. If there is not sufficient return for the investor community to have any interest, they won't play. They won't give the developer any money. If the developer doesn't think that there's enough in it for the developer, if they can't pay their cost of staff, if they can't recoup their investment, then they're not going to play. So that green bar has to be sufficient enough to attract the investor capital as well as developer interest. At the bottom side, the blue bar is the land cost, the residual land value. The land cost is not always a fixed amount, but it is a fixed amount in the case where a developer is agreeing with a, with a seller as to what they're going to pay for the property. At that point, it becomes a fixed, a fixed cost. There are two ways in which those costs occur in development. One is that that cost is just an agreed-upon price. I'm going to agree to pay you $6 million for your piece of property. Another way is that a developer may enter into an agreement with a landowner, which says you have, in essence, a participation with me. I'm going to guarantee to pay you a certain amount, but if I get these entitlements, I may pay you more. So there's that kind of a deal. And sometimes developers have to put out the entire amount of money upfront. Sometimes they option the property. But at some point, their money goes hard. So at some point, a developer has millions of dollars of investment in a property in terms of land, as well as sometimes millions of dollars in entitlement costs, planning costs to pursue the development. At the same time, when a developer is evaluating a deal, or if the investment community is evaluating a deal, or they're comparing deals across markets, they do what's called a residual land value analysis. And you're going to hear about that more from staff today because that's the analysis that's been performed in San Jose. And they're going to do this, this calculation where they're going to be looking at, actually, I'm going to skip one slide, and then I'm going to go back, and then I'll go back to the concept of the other slide, where they're going to be saying the difference between the potential value that you can get, so the potential value of that apartment building, once it's fully built, once there's, it's occupied and producing income, and the projected development cost without land, including whatever the target return on investment is, that developer margin, that developer return or profit, that when you take that value and you take the costs away, you get your residual land value. That residual land value has to be higher than what you are going to have to pay for, as a developer, going to have to pay for the land cost. And it's going to have to be high enough that you can deal with some of the contingency of things that are going to happen or could happen for you. And the sky, and I, and so just going back one slide, which is, there we go. So the value of land is tied to the rights that you, as a public agency, confer to it, right, as part of the entitlement process. The rights are associated with the land. I get to build 100 units of housing on it, as well as the liabilities that are associated with the land. For example, if it's got toxic cleanup associated with it, that cost has to be factored in. It's also a market-driven situation where landowners may think that they have something that's a lot more valuable than what it may pencil out on, on a residual land value basis. So what we're going to look at is a theoretical project in San Jose, a multifamily apartment development with 10% to 15% onsite affordable, and a developer who might be comparing your inclusionary housing requirements and your costs and your revenues to a property in another jurisdiction nearby. It's an existing retail property with existing retail on it, and we've got a negotiated purchase price of $6 million. Of course, the owner would prefer more. And you might have to pay more depending on how long the process takes because sometimes owners require that if you don't close in the land within a certain amount of time, you have to pay more for it. The proposed building characteristics are seven stories with a two-story podium. And the investment community and the developer are going to run some sensitivity analysis on this investment, and they're going to look at four initial scenarios. They're going to look at, what if I have 10% onsite below market rate units? What if, right now, I've got a sense of what I think the offsite costs and the fees are, but what if those increase by $20,000 per unit, which can happen during the development process? What if construction costs increased by 10%? We're definitely in a construction cost increase climate right now. It's been increasing about 6% per year recently. And what about if we have an alternative affordable requirement? And so run scenarios, and you say, okay, we're trying to hit $6 million. We're running four independent scenarios. So my base case, oh, I've got lots of room. I've got, I'm getting residual land value of $16 million. But if my fees go up by 20,000 a unit, that residual land value drops. Construction drops, the construct, sorry, if construction prices increase, my residual land value drops. And if I have 15% onsite BMR, my residual land value is less than if I had 10% BMR. And it depends on the income targeting, which we'll talk about a little later in the presentation, about how much it affects it. But what if we also look at a fifth scenario, which is that we're allowed to have parking reduction, which is something you as a policy group have actually allowed, is parking reductions for housing. And in particular for ground floor retail, it can be very important to allow parking reductions for that, particularly if it's structured parking. Because if you're looking at the parking cost per space, it is much less expensive to do surface parking. So this existing retail has surface parking, much more cost-effective. But as soon as you go into a podium underneath housing, and this is a seven-story building, it's more expensive. If it also goes partially below grade, it's even more expensive. And if heaven forbid, you've got to go down two levels below grade, it gets very expensive per parking space. So every cost of parking can actually make a difference in how many units you can produce. So we run this analysis, and we say, okay, independently, each of these works okay. But if we run all four of the first scenarios, well, actually, the offsite fees, the construction cost increase, and the 15% onsite BMR, if we put all of those together, then we don't generate enough residual land value. In fact, it's less than $1 million. And if we were to do it, though, in combination with a parking reduction, then it starts to work again. What's really important, I think, oh-
Yeah, I was just going to say, on the way down here, we're actually thinking about, you know, another way to think about this, this slide before is almost if you envision the scales of justice, right? And the goal is that the city is putting weight on one side that is costing the project, but you're getting benefit, and the community is getting benefit out of that. In a perfect world, the city gets all of the benefit they would want. All of the little weights go on one side, and it still stays in balance, and projects can go forward. The, the difficulty that we all face as a group trying to get the, the goals that we all want is that the financial markets and the, you know, developer sentiment moves much, much faster than public policy can move. And so the best thing that you can do as a council is set up the policies in a way that provides some consistency, provides some predictability. And at certain times, you're going to get a lot of development, and other times you're not. And you may be able to pull some levers quickly, but many of them take a long time to pull. It's setting the stage for what you want that's most critical.
And I want to add one other thing. What happens when the residual land value drops too low? That means that land is not used for housing. They'll keep it as a parking lot, a car wash, whatever other purpose that has a higher value than $1 million. And that's also, if you start losing opportunity sites for housing, then there's less housing production.
Just to be clear, in this example, the threshold would be 6 million. Is that right?
The threshold was 6 million.
Okay, so if there's anything less than 6 million, it stays a car wash.
It stays a car wash.
Thank you.
So, so basically, to summarize this, is if you run these sensitivity cases individually, right, you still have a deal. But if you combine them, then you don't have a deal. But if you pull another policy lever, like reducing parking, then you get a deal again, right? So what we wanted to do with this illustration was just illustrate to you the importance of your policy decisions to helping tip the scale, as, as Drew was just saying. And that it really does make a difference, and it may seem like it doesn't, but it really does. And to build on what I said earlier, that the more straws that we can take off the camel's back, right, the more likely the camel will move forward. So what we're going to do, oh, is there any more you wanted to add to this? No. Okay. So what we're going to do now is go into Chapter Three about what can policy do. So what are these policy levers that we're all going to talk about? And there's three policy levers that we're going to speak about.
Sure. So, you know, in the equation of an income-producing piece of real estate, the two ways to make things better are increase the revenue or decrease the cost. You know, and easier said than done, of course. And then the third, we're going to talk about increasing certainty. And most often, that's certainty of process. But certainly, certainty of policy over a longer time, you know, makes development happen more often. We used to say in our, in our office that a perfect city to us is a city where you could walk into City Hall with a proposal or with an idea, and a staff planner that you speak to, the community development director, the mayor- the community development director, the mayor, and a planning commissioner would all give you the same answer as to what they would like to see on a particular piece of land. That's almost never the case, but that would be perfection. The bottom message, though, is don't let perfection be the enemy of the good, right? We are in a housing crisis, as Mayor Licardo said. So many cities that we are dealing with, they say out loud they're in a crisis, but they are not reacting as if they're in a crisis. They're not making policy decisions to respond to a crisis. And that's really what we need to do in California. So Libby, you touched on this one earlier.
Right. So we just want to thank you very much for making your parking requirements more flexible and lowering them. We understand that you've alleviated them on affordable housing. We'd like you to consider, you know, being flexible in your parking requirements, particularly as it relates to ground floor retail and in transit-friendly places for multifamily
So for many, many years, we wanted to create active streets. And we thought the way to create active streets was to enforce and require retail. I think we've learned now that empty retail does not produce active streets. Occupied housing does produce active streets. So this is another thing you can do, to change that policy to what's currently needed.
This is probably one nobody wants to jump on, but, you know, park fees, park requirements, again, if you boil it down to a cost, it can be looked at that way. It is certainly one of the greatest public benefits that comes with new development projects. And we have seen cities change policies, sometimes just in the short term, to spur development when that was their desired result.
Processing fees are not a big part of the equation. However, they are when developers have the most expensive money. The most expensive money is most probably land. But the second most expensive money is pre-development and processing money, because that money has to come out of developer equity, out of their investment, or out of their investor equity. Because you don't get construction financing when you're trying to process the development. You have to wait. Construction financing comes in last. So it is important, even though it may be a small cost, to think about it in terms of the timing and the impact on investment.
I think for the same reasons that Libby stated, lower utility connection fees, pay a lot of different fees, and also inspection fees, et cetera. And I think the next one I'd like to also touch upon, because we've been thinking about it a lot, there's two things for affordability. There's the number of units that are affordable and the average median income of those affordable units. So there may be a way where you balance the two. You can play with those two. You can have more onsite affordable, but increase the affordability to be more workforce, middle income. Or if you want to target more of the lower income, then lower the number of units. It's, again, as Drew said, we don't want to be callous about a very sensitive subject, such as affordable housing, but it is ultimately a number on a spreadsheet that you have these two levers to work with.
And I just wanted to add on the utility piece, not just utility connection fees, but also the infrastructure investment. I hear about this a lot, which is both for affordable housing, as well as market rate housing, whereas, and I understand, as a city, you need that infrastructure. So you need the water in the sewer delivered properly. But what can happen is, there can be these surprise investments, like the Public Works Department didn't necessarily let the developer know. There isn't necessarily a path forward where a group of property owners together may make this investment. So the first in to do that new residential development has to pick up the entire burden. There may or may not be a reimbursement clause for that developer to get reimbursed. And that can make a significant difference to a deal. It can tank deals, not just for market rate, but affordable as well.
So real estate tax abatement might be one that we would need a magic wand to, you know, to implement. But it's just up here to point out that in a typical multifamily apartment project, 50% of the operating expenses are real estate taxes. And so, one of the things, and Nevada's certainly a much better expert at this than we are, being in the affordable space, but limiting or eliminating real estate taxes is a huge cost on a project. And back in the days when we had redevelopment agencies and TIF financing, you know, cities or agencies could return some of that money to either a project itself or the area of town that it wanted. It's a little bit more difficult these days, but there are some creative ways to do it, and certainly, you know, larger state policy that may allow that to happen again in the future.
Associated with lowering, so lowering construction costs, that's just pretty much as hard as trying to abate real estate tax. Everyone keeps thinking about, you know, alternative, modular, offsite. It's, we could spend a whole day talking about that, but a couple of thoughts. Along with real estate tax abatement, maybe something more within reach is sales tax abatement. Developers were charged by the construction industry, fair amount of sales tax on all the materials and services. So maybe we can abate the sales tax on new housing construction. And I guess a more radical idea is maybe the city can help lend its negotiation powers to each housing developer on an individual basis to try to negotiate maybe materials or services on a bulk, almost like a healthcare system for housing.
And again, none of these are easy, but considering the cost of sustainability and reach goals, you know, we have seen some cities institute policies that are very, very well-intentioned with respect to the environment and sustainability. But, you know, one example is a city that wants all-electric, you know, buildings in the future, as well as electric vehicle charging. And by the way, PG&E said, oh, if every house was electric and everybody had an electric vehicle, we don't have a grid that could support all of that. And so, it's those types of coordinations and maybe putting policies in over time. Or again, considering the cost-benefit analysis when you're in a crisis, as to which is more critical, having any housing at all, or, you know, having all the sustainability goals reached.
And can I just add on the PG&E note? That coordination with PG&E is incredibly important. So having a staff person that is actually working actively with PG&E to help facilitate some of these, because some of the requirements are also a barrier to housing as well.
So on the revenue side, Eric touched on this a little bit before, just those levers within the affordability world of both income range target, as well as number of units, are two different levers to pull.
So I think that this one is really important, and I know that Jackie and her team, and you as city council members, do everything in your power to try to secure more funding for housing. This is incredibly important. The rental housing voucher programs that the Santa Clara County Housing Authority is administering are particularly important to those who are very, at extremely low-income levels and need rental subsidy. But we're always looking for opportunities to try to figure out how to leverage those dollars and to be able to include them in market rate, mixed-income, affordable housing.
As Libby pointed out earlier, developers will need, or investors will invest when they know there's a target return. The higher the transfer tax, because these investors are looking to invest and exit in five years, the higher the transfer tax, the higher the hurdle to hit that target return. So maybe reducing or relaxing transfer taxes on housing projects.
And don't worry, we're really getting to the fun ones now. Limiting the effect of rent control. So I know this has been a big topic in San Jose. There's, you know, no shortage of economists who argue, you know, on both sides of the rent control debate. All I can say with certainty is that from the standpoint of investment dollars, it can be perceived as a risk. And it's just worth knowing that as you make those policy decisions. This one is near and dear to my heart, streamlining the approval process. And as Libby mentioned earlier, the riskiest dollars that are spent in development are upfront, when nobody has any idea what the finish line is going to look like. And there are examples, we'll get to Redwood City in a moment, you know, it was a downtown that blossomed in the last 15, 10 years. But what allowed it to blossom was a foundation in their planning and policy that was set 20 years prior to the downtown really blossoming. And so, when we talk about certainty and processing, it can be the city front-running SEQA, it can be the city front-running what types of uses you would like to see, so that, again, in that perfect world where a proposal comes into City Hall and everybody, you know, from the mayor on down, knows exactly what the answer is to say, this is what we want on that site, this is what we're willing to support, and this is why.
This one is, I know, a tricky one as well, and it's only going to work in certain locations, possibly converting office to housing. I think as important alongside of it is like the retail or shopping center to housing conversion, and also one that's not up there, which is church property to housing, or a part of church property to housing. Looking at alternative uses, as Eric was just saying, that aren't housing now, how can we convert them to housing? It's often, it's complex for staff, it's complex for you as decision-makers, it's often complex for the neighbors, because they're used to the existing use being something different, so it takes a lot of education. But we think it's really important to think about these alternative locations for housing. And you've pioneered looking at it, you know, being able to put affordable housing in industrial areas, for example.
Yeah, I'm trying to be real quick. I think a lot of people thought, you know, with the downtown's being empty and offices being empty, the silver bullet would be converting underutilized Class B and C office buildings into housing. Everyone's looking at it. It's much harder than it looks. We are working with other groups, ULI is, to try to figure out different archetypes that actually fit. Unfortunately, there needs to be some pain and blood on the streets with office buildings dropping to below $300 a foot before that can become a reality. But that's something to be exploring, and we will need the city's help to relax requirements in order to make that happen.
So, and I touched on Redwood City already, so we'll jump past this one. This will conclude our piece of the presentation, so we'll throw in one last hometown image as we get to our end, and pass it on to Nevada, and then obviously, we'll be here for questions after staff gives their report.
Way to play to the home crowd, Drew.
There we go. Good afternoon. I'm Nevada Merriman. I'm the Policy Director for MidPenn Housing. You are familiar with our organization. In addition to the 2,500 residents of San Jose that we are proud to say are MidPenners, MidPenn residents, we have another 311 homes in the pipeline. The picture to the right there is the Emmanuel Sabrato Permanent Support of Housing Community that is one of the case studies in the study session material that you have before you today. I want to offer my thanks to the city's staff and the consultant teams who have been approaching this topic with great rigor. And we have been really trying to, as well at MidPenn, sharpen our understanding of the issue so that we can look at our solutions. We work in 11 counties, so there's many opportunities for contrast on a city-by-city And I'm going to jump right into it so that we can have plenty of time for questions. In the Silicon Valley, the more that you are looking to reduce rents and subsidize at the lower affordability levels, the further we are away from the market. So we have the three bars here, an extremely low-income family is, you could see much further away from the red line of income needed to get up to where you can go out on the street and purchase, rent your apartment. At the very low-income level, it's about in the middle, and at the low-income level, you're seeing it's getting pretty close. So that might mean that some older apartment stock, the 20, 30-year-old apartments, might be able to be, that's probably where you're seeing a lot of those groups that are not indeed restricted affordable housing, how they're finding housing. This is made worse by income inequality. Year over year, you're seeing 10% jumps in what the area median income is, and wages aren't keeping up with that. I don't, very few professions are getting 10% year-over-year increase when it comes time for their performance review. So people are, if you're feeling as though, many families are not keeping up, it's because they aren't. They aren't keeping up with the progression and the rate that this is happening at. The market doesn't produce it because it simply doesn't pencil. You, it very simply said, the, if I want to go and purchase a single-family home, the bank is going to look at my revenue, my pay stubs. And the analogous piece to that in multifamily development is they're going to look at the income that your residents are putting together. If your residents are unable to afford up to that red line, which we just saw, if they're not, if they're not making that six-figure salary, you have a lot less income to work with, and therefore, your mortgage is much smaller. That difference between what our residents can afford, the mortgage that we can afford to support through their income, and what we really need in order to build the housing, because as your reports suggest, affordable housing is not, in some cases, is a little bit more expensive sometimes than market rate. We don't get a haircut on the cost to build the new units. That's what's known as the gap, and it's where many different public sources come in to try to fill that gap. We primarily, the federal government has, the primary tool for encouraging affordable development is through the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And there's two programs that drive slightly different results, but the overall kind of rhythm of the programs is the same, where we are looking at the amount and trying to maximize that amount of federal equity that we can bring in to our localities, and then using local dollars. And that, usually, in that beginning part that Ms. Seifel so nicely spoke about, where maybe a MidPenn has an advantage over a Saris Regis, is that at times, if a city's able to free up some of those early dollars for pre-development, that risky money there, we're using that, and then trying to build something that later on, we can go together, go leverage outside federal dollars. And then private investment from the equity community. So that's the capital stack, the simple version, which people just love to see. And with a 9% credit, you're getting about 60-ish percent, that top purple from the federal government. With a 4% credit, you're getting 30, maybe 40%-ish. So the, in a 9% program, you're usually also required to do deeper affordability, and because the federal sources are able to cover more, in some cases, you may be able to have fewer local sources. And local here would usually mean between the city, potentially some version of free land or reduced subsidized land. We have a, our Emmanuel Sabrato project, again, is on a church site, and you'll see it has the lowest land cost per unit of the examples studied. So maybe between either land or city, there's certainly Measure A dollars from the county, and also your housing authority. Those are the types of sources that we're looking to layer in to figure out this gap. The not-so-simple version is that over the years, it's become increasingly, you know, instead of having one gap source or two gap sources, sometimes it's four or five, when at times, we must go to the state together to find an additional program to further subsidize. Those, in turn, are usually driven by single policy objectives of the state. So there is a, for instance, there's an infill infrastructure program, and so that is going to benefit anything that's built kind of within the urban core of most cities. There's a multifamily housing program, and that particular program benefits, is looking for deep affordability. So at each stage where we're needing to go and find another source, there's probably some other obligation, shall we say, some very specific obligation, whether it's carbon reduction, deep affordability, an infill site, transit-oriented development, a program for veterans. I could go on, but every single one of these layers, although it may add, it may take down the gap, it's probably not a one-for-one gap take down there, because it's probably adding something at the same time. To get to the timeline on the project here, you know, I've been with MidPenn for 15 years, and the first 13 years of that, I was in our real estate development team. So it was living and breathing the entitlement process of Silicon Valley, mostly San Mateo, Santa Clara County. And that timeline in between there, developing the project concept, and then trying to really move that into entitlements. move that into entitlements, that used to be the area where we were the most stuck, and it was the most difficult to really assess risk. And that was a period of time, you know, where entitlements could stretch for years sometimes, especially if you were looking to, if you needed a general plan amendment and really needed to change the zoning. Now I would say the flavor of affordable housing that's really taken off and changed since 2020 is that the green box here, the Funding Assembly, that's really, not to take anything away from the art of entitling projects, but it's really the Funding Assembly where it has, the bottleneck of this year, the 2020 and beyond era is blooming. I want to give a quick shout-out to the city staff, but also to you, Mayor, for your advocacy at the state level. Last year, at a critical time, at a critical hearing, there was an effective media strategy so as to call attention to the fact that not a single 4% tax credit project that was competing for bonds from any of the big three cities of Northern California, San Francisco, Oakland, or San Jose, was in competitive range for funding. You know, so that brought about kind of a bigger-picture policy question, you know, what's wrong with the scoring if these big cities can't get something through? And so that's a, because bonds are competitive now, and before 2020 they were not, so when you got your project together, you went and got your bonds. Now you get your project together, and you have to go compete. And I wish I could say it was easy for us, but in many cases, we're competing against our peers. So MidPenn is competing against Eden, the city in some cases could be competing against their own projects. So that Funding Assembly, continued need for state advocacy, and the resources to build out what you are experiencing in a different part of your city, which is planning for your regional housing needs allocation, where the numbers at this point for very low, low, and, well, they don't check extremely low, but I try to follow that. So you're, at the lower levels of affordability, you're having, you know, very large numbers in which you're being asked to own for, and the resources at the state level and the federal level are not quite at that level to support that. So that's where we're seeing right now the uncertainty. So that just means that all of the good work that your staff has continued to do and the embrace, the city's posture of embracing many of these state financing tools, the streamlining tools, is helpful to us. I'm going to just bring up a quick example from a city just a little bit north of you in San Mateo. City-owned property to adjacent sites in their downtown, and the elegance of this example is that with two policy changes, they were able to drop $75,000 a door. So AB 1763 was a limited density bonus for sites that were near a pretty good transit. In this case, or in any case, you can add up to three stories, and the city of San Mateo said, oh, I know you're halfway through entitlements, but can you go back and look at this and see what you can do? So they wanted to maximize what is a precious resource for them, which is their land. They don't have that many publicly-owned pieces of land to try to make a difference, and so they really compelled us to go and take a look at it. And we said, well, it would make sense for us to add two stories and 60-ish units. Do we need to add the parking with that? They waived the parking on those new units, and so with adding the two stories and not requiring the parking there, we are actually right across the street from a city-owned garage, so there's a little bit of a, there's other parking that is around. We were able to lower the price per unit by almost $75,000 a door. So big moves can be made in this arena with a couple, with a couple great decisions, and that's a theme throughout. So this is sort of a, these black boxes here, new state tools, streamlined financing, fees, and at the bottom here, public sector flexibility. These are the different kind of dots, if you will, that we are, in the cities where we are frequent flyers, we're really asking our city partners to come together and help us connect those dots and strengthen the connective tissue, because there's not a single one of these projects that we're working on where we can say, it's just one of these boxes that is making it feasible. It's putting them all together, that's the art. And having, in addition to your development partners, you have many best-in-class ones that operate here in the city, also having really talented staff that can help us see which, some of the dots that are possible to be connected here, and really help us be creative about what we can go and try to put together. So we discussed the addition of 61 units, that drives efficiency, streamlined financing, and the continued pressure on the state, public policy advocacy at the state level is needed so that we have enough resources that the city can, and it's obvious that the city can compete for the resources at a level that is at least, you know, not giving the Northern California city somehow a disadvantage. Fees is always relevant, enduring relevance of either deferring fees till later on in the process, or waiving them altogether. I will mention that Sunnyvale, for a decade, has had a policy of not requiring park fees for 100% affordable housing, and that often takes down the cost by 5% or 6% of the total development cost, which is huge. But impact fee deferrals are also very useful. So when we go out and start our construction, typically at this point we are needing to use a construction loan. The interest on that, you've heard, the interest has gone up, so it's more expensive money than we used to have. And we are buying down, taking down those fees usually when we are obtaining our building permit. So we're taking down those fees then, and that's two years of a construction loan where it's, where there's interest every month that we're paying on those fees. So if we can defer that by two years and instead make it a condition of us obtaining occupancy or CFO, it's a substantial amount, usually hundreds of thousands of dollars on these projects. So it's worth considering, and we would appreciate the consideration there. And then, on the public sector flexibility, we could continue to, and I'm curious to hear where you may have questions on this, but are the internal champions and the innovations that the public sector is coming to us with, this is just really critical to the secret sauce of making stuff happen right now. That's it, thank you.
Thank you so much to the panel, Mayor. This completes this segment of the presentation, and we can pause here for questions from the council discussion.
And by segment, you mean we're going to go to a staff presentation after this?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just thinking out loud about sequence here. Okay, why don't we go to the council for questions? And while folks are thinking of their questions, going online here to see who's, I'll throw out mine, since folks are not leaping to their virtual feet yet. Eric, I appreciate your, first of all, thank you all for the presentation, really appreciate it, and thank you for your longstanding relationship, and Drew's case, your services and your investment in our city and all that you guys are doing to try to help cities figure this out. Eric, you mentioned that the conversion of Class B and C buildings, I know that the office conversions are on everyone's mind, I know, and ourselves as well, and work on something now with Councilmember Pross, and try to figure out, how can we do this in downtown? As I recall, Gensler did a study, I think in Calgary, kind of concluded, hey, those older 50s and 60s office buildings with the smaller floor plates tend to be more ideal because sunlight is at a premium, particularly with larger floor plates. I appreciate there are really large capital costs involved here around plumbing and utilities to make those retrofits, but as we're thinking about trying to ready ourselves for a potential, what we hope might be some builders or investors that would be interested in doing this, because I think we all see we're going to, we're going to have lots of vacant offices for a while, for perhaps a very long time. I think it's 25 million square feet now are vacant in San Francisco, if I'm not mistaken. It's creeping down here, and frankly, I'd love to get some of this older office off the inventory, so that way we can focus everybody on the high-end office that is being built now and get that filled up. So I guess the big question is, you said it's going to take office costs getting down to about $300 a square foot. We're always away from that today. I'm guessing it won't take long for high-interest rates and a lot of vacancy to push some of those prices down. I'd like to be ready when that happens, so we can suddenly get some housing converted, and we could, you know, fill our downtown with, you know, 4,000 more people. Nothing would be better for helping out a small restaurant or, you know, anybody else is struggling here downtown. What are the non-obvious things we should be looking at as a city to sort of facilitate that? And I put it to Eric as he mentioned it, but anybody wants to jump in. And are there, are there experts out there we should be talking to? Because I know it's happening outside the barrier, we're seeing it, cities like Kansas City, I was just talking to the mayor, I think Cincinnati, he said they were doing it like crazy out there. Clearly, other cities are doing it with lower construction costs. How could we get there?
I'm glad you asked. ULI is on it.
Good.
We are on it right now. We're working with Gensler. I was just talking to Raymond from Toronto. They've devised this app, they call it an app, it's a prototyping app to, you put different office prototypes in, it spits whether or not this is appropriate for conversion or not, what are the costs. I guess a couple of observations, I think, being on the West Coast with our land was a blessing and a curse. The blessing was we had all this land, so we created different financial districts, residential districts, unlike the East Coast, which didn't have the benefit. But now we're seeing the curse part of it. We don't have housing next to financial districts and have the integration, but we realize we want that, because it's, we want to work, live, play, city. What can a city be doing? So part of this study, and we hope to have it by Q1 next year, and maybe we come back, Roseland, and talk about our findings with Gensler and SPUR, we're working with SPUR and Gensler together, it's going to be, we're going to require city partnerships, whether it's relaxation on, you know, accessibility, relaxation on seismic, relaxation on other types of requirements and fees and affordability, all of the, many of the items that were teased out here as things that suppress development, maybe for downtown office to resident conversions, those elements can be part of the, part of what the city can do to ensure that it happens so we can get it over the hump. Using a lot of camel analogies these days, but that's a different type of hump.
We've had a drought for a long time.
Yes, yes, another one, good one. So that's something we can definitely share with the city, and so we can layer maybe an à la carte menu of what the city can do to get it to make it financially feasible.
And this report will be on the ULI website, and we'll all be able to look at it?
Yep.
That's great.
You know, and some of the things I would add, we touched on in the presentation, the fee structure associated with a conversion could be addressed ahead of time. You know, parking is certainly one that, nobody likes to hear it, but oftentimes when developers are looking at a piece of land, they start with the parking count, and then figure out, how many cars can I park, therefore, how much can I build on top of that parking? And if you have an existing office building, one of the advantages you'll have is that, although there's a height limit because of the airport flight path, if you're taking over a superstructure that exists, if it has the right characteristics of seismic, et cetera, you couldn't even begin to rebuild that superstructure for $300 a square foot, if that's what those buildings are going to trade for. And I think they may, and they will. So there could definitely be some opportunity there. It's really studying what is your building stock? How are you going to address the things like parking that's maybe the low-hanging fruit? Things like school fees you maybe can't address because you don't directly control that, right? But the things that you directly control are the areas I'd focus on.
And we just got back from Dallas where the ULI Fall Meeting was, and there's some really interesting examples in downtown Dallas. And one I'll just point out on the parking theme is the National Hotel. It was done by Todd Development, it's really interesting, but it didn't have much parking because historically in downtown Dallas, there weren't tons of surface parking lots, so the office buildings themselves didn't have much parking. So the city of Dallas is allowing valet parking, a very, very small amount of parking within the actual building for the residents there. They're actually finding, and this is a good and a bad, so I'll just point it out, that a number of the residents of this particular building are not full-time residents, so they don't necessarily need full-time parking.
Right.
So it is something to really be thinking about, the parking situation, whether or not you can allow shared parking in some of the public parking garages through some kind of program, or with other buildings, and not require a large amount of parking, particularly in an older building where it just may not be provided, or was provided at a very limited amount.
Right, makes sense, and particularly given the fact you have offsetting daytime versus nighttime uses, you'd think there'd be a lot of opportunity for shared. Going to parking, and if I recall correctly, we've now approved the elimination of parking minimums for, is it all housing? I believe. Yeah, I'm just looking at staff, about where we're at here in the city.
Yeah, Mayor, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to recall where we're at, where our last council vote was. Have we directed staff to eliminate parking minimums across, for all housing? We have, that's what I thought, okay.
We're actually getting ready to come to-
And so we're waiting for that-
It's November 29th with the final-
Okay, the ordinance is coming, good. I wasn't sure where we were, we hadn't yet blessed the ordinance, but at least we all said, go forward and do it. Okay, so that's certainly positive, but what I keep hearing over and over is, you know, we have lots of wonderful developers, I think of one who's got two different projects entitled with zero parking, and they are not getting financing. And is there any kind of regional convening or conversation that could happen with, you know, I don't know if this, I mean, I know there's too many entities out there doing the financing to get everybody in a room, but I don't know, if it's the ratings agencies or what, to say, hey, can we figure out ways that we're going to agree to finance projects that are quote-unquote "underparked"?
Well, is the city willing to sign a guarantee?
I doubt it.
That's-
We don't think we take those risks.
I know, that's, but maybe, I know that that's a nonstarter, because you can't have a contingent liability because it impacts your bonding capacity, and you have to fund roads, schools, and much more equally important things. But I do think it's not worth completely dismissing outright. Maybe there are ways and layers of creating some type of surety, you know, in case of massive default or massive, some type of outside thing that maybe your controller or financial experts can find a way to layer in that doesn't impact your bonding capacity but would provide some surety to the financing agencies. Because as Drew's graph showed, opportunistic, which is development, what we all want is the highest level of risk. Any way we can notch down that risk, maybe with some type of city or government assistance, allows that money to be cheaper. And if that money's cheaper, then we can get housing built.
Yeah, and you know, I'm thinking about, on the, both Calpers and Calsters are some of the largest investors in real estate, as we all know. We also have some of the largest banks and lending institutions here in the state, so it may be worth your idea of a convening, of really putting this in a sustainability lens, because they're all working on, you know, basically three E's, or true bottom line, whatever you want to reference it, and to really just say, look, this is part of our sustainability mission as a state, let's put our money where our mouth is, let's figure out ways to encourage these lenders to allow for no parking, or minimum parking.
That sounds like a great idea for a ULI conference.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we, maybe we need to think about it, but I think it would take, I think the public sector would be a really important player to that, alongside of that.
I was going to add one last thing, I mean, again, what Libby raised, and I know this might be a third rail, you know, we're developers, we're here to ensure that money gets to deploy to build housing. Who owns it ultimately doesn't matter to us, if the ultimate owner is a public entity, the JPA model, which they created to have a public entity own existing value-add land, they didn't pay property tax. Whether or not that was abused or not, we can debate, but how do we turn that into production? Same concept, if a pension fund or another entity wants to own new housing production, it eliminates 50% of your operating costs, all of a sudden the cost of housing, and the revenue generated goes up, and then we don't have to go through the whole state legislature and change the charter to increase the exemption levels of welfare tax. So that's something of great convening, and how do we produce market-rate housing that can be owned publicly but developed privately so that we don't pay property tax? I think that is a game changer.
Well, and I would add, since the topic has been opened, I know that what we call the JPA model was studied by the city, and the city of San Jose said, no, thank you, and many other cities did as well. The model, because- The, the model, because so many cities have grown skeptical of it, is being re-studied, re-imagined, so that it is something that is much more sustainable going forward. And the city being part of that discussion may be worthwhile. You know, there's a group doing it in San Mateo County that I'm aware of, and they are working with the cities collaboratively to understand what, what really does solve more problems and cause less problems with that type of ownership model.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and I, you know, I hope, I won't be around, but I hope we accept that invitation because I, I think, at least from my perspective, the concerns were less qualitative than quantitative in terms of where we are on the spectrum of risk. And, yeah, I'd like to think there's a place where we could all get to, to move that forward. In any event, I always learn something with every convening of ULI, and I, this is no exception, so thank you all for helping us learn. And I think, one thing I'll mention, you know, you, you had a separate slide simply on the challenges of indecision in, in cities, and you know, it was the very first thing I remember learning when I ran for, for office as a council member, sitting down with Lou Wolf, and he said, the one thing that no government understands is the cost of indecision, and it absolutely kills our ability to move forward. And I, you know, I hope that we are embracing that here in San Jose, that the cost of indecision, the time we take to get to a decision is the thing that is absolutely the biggest burden. So, hopefully, we will embrace the ability to decide quickly. All right, let's, let's move on. I don't see any hands except, Councilmember Prowl.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. And I wanted to say thank you to ULI as well for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. What is your assumed time for the return on investment? You're utilizing that right throughout the presentation and in your, your evaluation calculations on, hey, there has to be a certain return on investment. What, what is the length of time that you've assumed in there for that return on investment?
I can speak to that. There are a couple of different metrics. Return on cost is a static metric that does not include time, and that's simply, you know, how much income does a building generate over the total cost of creating that building? So, that's, that's one metric. Investors often, regardless of their time horizon, whether it's five years, seven years, 10 years, or forever, do like to look at IRR, or the internal rate of return, which obviously is time-dependent. And so, many investors, depending on whether they are in the business of investing, of operating buildings when they buy them, or development projects that take much longer to create, will pick a time length either seven years or 10 years. And even if their business plan is not to sell the building in year seven, they will run the model as though they do, just so that they can compare apples to apples to apples across their portfolio. But I would say return on cost and IRR are the two most common.
Okay, yeah, it's helpful to, to understand that I've had two sort of what I feel are abnormal realities that we have downtown. One is that we have some major developers, like, new developers like West Bank, that appears though they're willing to take a lot potentially, right, in the, in the short term on breaking ground on, on a number of projects. And, and because the fact that they have numerous projects, I think they're, right, they're looking at playing the long game. And so, that's why I was just kind of curious on, you know, what that timeline might look like. I think it's, it's unique, maybe you can confirm that, when you have such a big developer that actually is looking at multiple developments versus just a one-off project, that they're, you know, they're, they're investing in a longer-term return on investment rather than just looking at one project. Happy to hear the, the thoughts on, on how that, that plays into it, sort of this big developer.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I, I did not hear the developer that you were referring to.
Oh, I was mentioning West Bank.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and I, I can't speak to their particular outlook, but there are certainly groups that are large enough where they may say, our development activity in a place like downtown San Jose is going to be so impactful that it is going to, it's going to change the nature of downtown. And, you know, everything that's going on around Deeredon Station is an example of that, something of such a scale that it will change the entirety of downtown or, or, you know, some of the characteristics of that sub-neighborhood. And so, yes, they may not look at it on one particular building, but on a longer-term strategy. Public REITs are able to look at a much longer-term strategy, and then, of course, there are some private investors, not always necessarily housing-related, but the Sobrato organization is obviously a bright-chining example of somebody who, you know, is typically a long-term investor. But not every developer does that. Some, and I would say the, the impact of structured finance or more institutional dollars in real estate, again, will look at five, seven, and 10-year time horizons in their underwriting.
Thank you. The other curiosity that I have is, you demonstrated the examples of, of this residual land value, and what I'm curious about is the, the scenarios where either you have somebody that's, that's owned land for decades, literally, right, maybe passed down through family or whatever it may be, and so that the residual, residual land value for them at this point, right, is, is maybe not, not a factor, but yet they still, right, aren't, aren't developing, so it's, it's obviously, the, the other factors are costing too much. Similarly, I think we have a lot of entitlements that, that are not breaking ground. Is that, you know, the residual land value at that point, my understanding, it doesn't make a difference because the other factors are what are just making a project infestable to break ground? Is that, that the easy assumption or the right assumption?
It can be a, a number of things. As Eric alluded to during the presentation, there may be an existing use that's not particularly glamorous, whether it's a surface parking lot, whether it's, you know, a retail establishment that's long in the tooth. If that existing use generates a decent amount of income relative to the value of the land or the, or, you know, relative to what could be done there, it may be a better alternative to leave it as is. So, even though the land residual.
Like you started off saying, the, the car wash stays the car wash, whatever, right? It's just sort of.
Yes, and, and there are examples of folks who own car washes, and they say, if I were going to build a new building, I would have to invest tens of millions of dollars or more, I would have to put my, you know, the family wealth that's been created over generations at stake because development is such a risky proposition. And so, the easier decision sometimes in those scenarios is to keep operating a car wash.
That, that makes sense, but we also, we have a number of just vacant properties that also have been, you know, either long entitled or long-held by the same property owner and, and have yet to see any movement on development. And again, some with entitlements of, of, you know, so anyways, it just, that's kind of always, you know, my understanding, it's got to be right, these other factors, this, this cost of construction, the, the, the fees, right, the charges coming through the city, because the land value, in my, in my mind, in some of these, these cases, has, has been taken out of the, the equation. So, if you don't have that, that, you know, value coming in on the land because they, it's just, it's vacant, then again, it, the only other reason why something may not be breaking ground is because these other factors, is that?
It is the case, and what Libby's slide didn't show, there are cases where land residual will return a negative value. And, and it just means the project's not financeable, so, without a subsidy of some kind. So, that may be the case in the, the vacant parcels you're thinking of.
Got it.
And unfortunately, one of the aftermaths of Prop 13 is that there are a number of retail properties, often commercial properties, that have been owned for a very long period of time, have a very low tax base, and so, the cost of carrying those properties is quite low. And that often is tied with those properties that remain vacant a long time and don't get redeveloped. That's, that's one case. Another case that I'm very familiar with from some of the work that I do is, properties have been owned by a family for a long time, they go into a trust situation, or they're owned by a number of family members, where it's just complicated to unwind it and sell it because, and also, the tax implications are hard. So, you have to make the deal, the deal has to command a lot more revenue than you would think it might have to command, just based on, on the fact that there's, it's not generating any revenue. It actually has to buy out family interests, or it has to pay for taxes, or both together.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you, that makes sense, especially the Prop 13 one, I know, that's actually come up conversation before, but I guess I hadn't really put two and two together on what properties we may have throughout, at least the downtown core, that, that could be a, a big factor. But I know some of them have been, you know, owned for, for many, many years and decades, and so that, that likely is a, a factor, another reason to, to update Prop 13. But you, you mentioned a number of things that I think, from the local to the, the state and even federal level, that could help policy-wise, and appreciate that, you know, coloring the, the conversation here, because I do think, you know, we've, you know, we, we've taken up a number of those topics you mentioned, rate control being, entering the fun one. I, I thought well before that, you had already entered a number of fun conversations that the council here has dove into on, you know, on, on housing development. But appreciate the discussion and look forward to the next portion. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. By Smer Jones. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. Kind of makes me want to, after the meeting, go home and dust off some of my old real estate books from when I took courses from Ken Rosen at, at the Fisher Center. I want to kind of take this at a higher level. You described some of the levers or tools that we'll be able to use to, to be able to help these projects move forward. The conversations that have taken place over the, the years I've been on council, there's a sentiment in certain parts of the community, as well as on council, that, you know, there's a fear that we're just going to leave, you know, money on the table for the developers. Can you kind of help me understand the process of how, whatever model or tools that you're going to provide us or, or make recommendations, how we can, you know, land on whatever that, that model or framework is? Because right now, the only thing that we have to work with is, the developers don't build, or they don't move these projects forward. So, that's our only indication of, we're not at the right place. How can we use the tools that you're going to provide us to be able to come up with that right place, or what I'd call the sweet spot?
Hey, let me respond to, and please chime in, I want to respond to the high level. Having been doing real estate, housing development, all of us here, 20-plus years each. In the beginning, when I was doing this, everyone looked at housing as coming to cities, and the housing developers are extracting value out of the city. We're coming here to profit from the city, to build housing. As, as the cost of housing's changed, and as the cities have started to look at housing developers as a means of extracting value from them, it's becoming less and less feasible. So, I think that's the first kind of mindset I see changing now, that we need to look at it more as a partnership. And I think that's what we're doing here, a partnership between government and developers, private developers, to see how housing can be built instead of kind of a quid pro quo. And I'll, I'll share my thought on how to ensure some type of fairness in ensuring that everyone is paying into the cost of housing. The residual, the residual land value analysis is a good one. We want to know that it's not going to be a car wash. We want to know the cost of housing development is not so heavy, so, so impactful that the land stays a car wash. So, that's one way of measuring. At this price, this price of land, it'll transact to become housing above a car wash or parking lot, then the cost of building the housing can't be more than, than this. You know, it's Libby's graphic, and maybe you can explain it more eloquently. That's one way of trying to measure that we're, we're getting enough benefits without overburdening the cost that no land will ever become housing.
I, I would just add that, you know, the, the reality is, in the next six, 12, 18 months, there may be very little that, that can spur activity immediately, because the capital markets are, have a, a very grim outlook with respect to, you know, new development investment relative to the cost. And, and that is going to change, but to your point, you know, I, I would caution you on overreacting in the next six to 12 months, and then all of a sudden, you see a lot of activity, and, and the answer moves too quickly, and you can't stop it fast enough, or you can't, you can't control it. What I think San Jose has done in the past and could continue to do are temporary measures, where you have abatement of fees or you have incentives with a short-term nature, and, and some of it may have to be trial and error, where you say, okay, in the downtown, we're going to offer these incentives, but only for the next 12 months, and you see how many permits you get within that 12-month period, or, or whatever the case may be. And those are things that if, if you get feedback that it's working, but 12 months isn't long enough, you can extend it. If you get feedback that it's not working at all, you try something else. So, I, I think short-term incentives or short-term programs may be a way to modulate the gas pedal, so to speak.
And then I have an additional, it's kind of a, a different way of thinking about this too, is, and we don't look at this often enough, is how many developers are repeat developers in your community? How many people have really stayed around for the long term? Like Sobrato obviously was mentioned and has been a stalwart for the South Bay. But that should be a real test, is to have good developers continue to develop in the city over time and stay with the city. And if that's not occurring, if it's a one-off, then it's, it's really a problem. And what I try to sometimes say to my public clients is, don't make it so difficult, don't make it so onerous that you'll never get that developer to come back in the door again. And we don't often think of it that way, but they're your customers, just like the public is your customers. I know the public doesn't see it that way. I know, I mean, I came from a place where I thought developers were, you know, were evildoers, you know, and raping the landscape, whatever it was. But if you really think about it, they are the ones that are going to make our world a better place, literally, if we allow them to do it, and we allow them to do a good job. And we want good development to be, be moving forward. So, I think it's really that partnership idea, just building on what Eric said. I mean, we at ULI are here to be your partners, we have great members, we are dedicated as an organization to, to making communities thrive and trying to have good development move forward. So, we want to, it's in our best interest and your best interest to see if we can get repeat development to occur over the long period of time, and, and whatever ends up being the short-term incentive, does it then turn into a long-term relationship that you can build upon, just like anything else?
And I'm not sure if this distinction needs to be made, but the affordable housing component is, doesn't go, doesn't have quite these steep sort of market vacillations. We are a pretty steady customer. There's all manner of contractors, general contractors in this region, that kind of like us for that reason, because we, there are some years where I'm, literally was the only person pulling a building, building permit for the whole city. And so, we, we, we're pretty consistent on that front. And so, I guess what I would say in terms of what tools could we offer, you know, looking at some of the state streamlining tools and seeing how the city has used them, SB 35 is still a relatively new innovation. You have done a few of these deals. There are little areas to procedurally smooth that out because it has to move all the way through the city. So, once it's entitled and you're, you're through the planning and that process, it needs to kind of continue to flow in through the building department and all the plan check and processing and permit. So, there's a lot of places, I think, with, that we could continue to look to really tighten up that, those timelines and the certainty, and, and, and take some of the promise of these tools and, and, you know, perfect them.
Actually, thanks for that response. That actually triggers another question. I, I ask developers this question all the time, and I still don't get it. When, you know, we, obviously, we go through cycles, market cycles, and when we're in a down cycle, there's a pullback in the capital markets in terms of, you know, financing these projects, when it would seem like that would be the, the best time to undertake a project. When it would seem like that would be the best time to undertake a project, when labor costs, material costs, and all the other costs are less. You know, obviously, you can't time the market, but if we go, look at history, you know, we go through market cycles, and there's a good chance that you'll complete your project somewhat, somewhere around the time of the market improving or being in an up cycle. So can somebody explain to me why the capital markets don't take advantage of that?
You should be a developer. We pound the table with that message. We, I can give you an example. In the great financial crisis, we had a project that was ready to go in the middle of 2009. And I won't name the investor, but a life insurance company was our investor. And we literally were banging on the table, saying, this is the best time to build. And they looked at us, and they said, we can't build right now, because nobody else is building. And they were scared to look silly, honestly. And we got an investment committee approval to build that project almost a year later to the day, and cost had gone up 15%, the hard cost had gone up 15% in that one year. And so it takes a lot of intestinal fortitude to go forward when nobody's going forward. And, you know, some of it is regulation. The banks are regulated. They, part of the reason the banking industry right now is worried is that they see potential defaults coming, and it may be a default in the office sector. But when the federal government stress tests the bank, and the bank needs to reserve more cash for those potentially troubled projects, it hamstrings their ability to fund a new great housing development in San Jose, even if a new great housing development in San Jose is a good financial proposition. So it's interconnectivity, it's regulation, it's, you know, it can be a lot of things. But it is the most difficult time to convince people to go forward. And we, like you, believe that more people should be going forward at these times.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. My assumption was correct. It doesn't make any sense.
Don't know that I can go that far.
I'll take it that far. But thank you. That's it. That's it, Mayor.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions from my colleagues? Oh, yes.
Yeah, can I just, I just wanted to weigh in a little bit. Thank you for the masterclass on development and the cost of development. It was really helpful. We have a lot of potential construction going on, we think. And to understand what the triggers are that are standing in the way from a developer actually pulling the trigger, and getting the financing they need, and all the other costs is really helpful. But I add, you mentioned that the market doesn't like uncertainty. None of us like uncertainty, certainly in the investment market. But, and that a developer needs predictability and consistency. So, but you also mentioned that maybe temporary incentives are the way to go. To me, that they don't go together. A temporary incentive doesn't provide certainty, doesn't provide consistency or predictability. It does for a short term, but if we lock it into that particular development, it does. But if we don't lock it in to that particular development, there is no uncertainty. So how do we eliminate from our side? We can't address the capital market. We can't lower interest rates. We cannot decrease the cost of land. That's going to happen over market conditions. We cannot affect the employment market or the cost of materials. But policies are things we can change, and you've provided us a lot of ideas. But how do we add certainty? How do we create predictability and certainty for our developers?
So first of all, you're not wrong, that consistency and short-term changes are incongruent. But maybe, let me think about it this way. Most often, the consistency that we think about is in land use and planning. And the idea of there is a downtown, there is an area of town next to a park or next to transit, where the city would like to see certain types of uses. And consistency in that type of long-term planning maybe is the best place to apply the consistency aspect. The short-term levers may be when you want that long-term plan to come into play faster than it's coming. And so you're going to make a change that affects the financial feasibility to try to be a catalyst and make more projects go forward that may in fact be consistent with that long-term plan. Does that answer your question?
Yes, such as reducing parking minimums and other requirements that we may be implementing for really good reasons, or haven't implemented yet, but need to implement in a much bigger way. Of course, reducing parking minimums decreases the cost for the developer, but it's also good for the environment, because it decreases the incentive of having your vehicles out and living in a vehicle society driven by the automobile. So there's lots of reasons that removing parking minimums. Well, I, this is really interesting. I know there's other things coming forward to us that will address specific fees. But is there, what's the one recommendation that you have for us? Are you going to make it later to, of how we're going to solve this problem? How we're going to create predictability with our developers? This is why you're here, and you pulled in, you're pulling in the big bucks.
I think I caveated this presentation at the beginning, that we didn't have the silver bullet.
Oh, come on.
I would think, maybe you should break it up into two, two parts. Let's look at future entitlements, creating certainty. How do we create a precise plan for the city? How do we ensure long-term predictability? So we have repeat customers of developers coming to downtown San Jose. And let's look at our current problem, the sites that are already entitled, that are stuck. As I think Vice Mayor Jones pointed out, Mayor LaCardo pointed out, there are multiple stuck projects. Those are what can benefit what Drew's talking about, the short term. The short-term incentives to get stuck projects built. And, you know, again, these are the things that no one wants to talk about. Reducing affordability requirements, reducing parking requirements, reducing retail, maybe eliminating sales tax for materials the city would collect, things like that. These would be short-term. And then the long-term would be creating predictability for future planning entitlement.
I think I want to put a plug in here for your housing element, too. I have worked for, I was the, and am the Mid-Penn Housing Element person. So when all jurisdictions want to seek that input, I have done this for several cycles now. And you mentioned that we can't decrease the cost of land, but that's exactly what you can do through your housing element. Either by looking at sites that were not originally housing sites, church parking lots. And another kind of beloved place to look is quasi-public land, if it's a school district-owned land, or your other public partners that may be trying to house their employees or their workforce. These are great places to look. Schools already do not pay taxes at the same rate. So this JPA model that was kind of discussed a few times, woven into the conversation, already applies. And they know how much they pay their employers, which is one of the major things that we're all trying to always guess, you know, who are we building for? So I think that there are opportunities to look at where you have land within the city. And I know that staff is kind of in the midst of one of the best tools. And it can be hard to recommit to looking at that, because it seems so academic or far away. But over and over and over again, we have sites that, when the market conditions are right, they build out. And that the, using that particular tool to remove a few of the key constraints, it doesn't matter now that the state environment has shifted so much. You can still look at where the constraints are today and try to open the aperture, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
I have Peralas's hand up on the table.
Yes, it is. Councilor Peralas, is that from before, or is that a new question?
Sorry, that is from before.
Okay, thank you. Great. And I appreciate the dialogue, which was, I think, very helpful. The last question I just wanted to throw in, since Retail's man mentioned a couple of times, and that's something I've been clinging to for a long time, like Charlton Heston do a gun or something. So I appreciate this is a burden for affordable builders and for market rate builders, having these retail spaces. And of course, nobody wants it to be vacant. And I'm just wondering, is there new thinking emerging about how we can fill these spaces with active uses that aren't necessarily, I mean, frankly, housing isn't really active. It's not, especially if you're in an urban area where people have safety concerns. You're never going to lease out that space that's right, well, depending, obviously, on a lot of circumstances. It's going to be very challenging, right? So, you know, whether it's daycare, or the gym, or it's something, is there some place where developers can be at peace with the notion that we want active space that's not housing at the base of a building?
I mean, I think you hit a, that's a possibility. We have talked about putting them in these spaces. On the ground floor, the gym, the clubhouse, different parts that would be amenity spaces. But currently, most jurisdictions won't permit it.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Okay, because of retail requirements, or?
Because of retail requirements, it's public, yeah. So it can be a private gym or a private clubhouse that serves the building community.
I would tell you, some of the most creative things we've seen, for some reason, my mind is picturing a block in Santa Monica, where they had a grocery store parking garage. And they put effectively pop-up businesses along the sidewalk. The sidewalk was deep enough, and the pop-up businesses were literally, think of something a lot better-looking, but a kiosk in a mall, where it folded up against the garage.
Yeah.
And when it pulled out, it allowed a business to exist for the day, and it was only taking up four to six feet off the edge of the garage. And there was still plenty of sidewalk left for people to walk past. But if that business is viable, it'll be there all day, and it'll be active. If that business is not viable, when you fold it down, it's arguably more attractive than the side of the garage. So it, we always ask, what are you really after? Are you after the retail tax revenue? Are you after the use that's in a traditional space? Or are you after the activation of the street scene? And depending on what the real goal is, there are different ways to accomplish it.
Right.
And that quasi-retail space, or that flexible retail space, especially today with technology and what pop-ups can do, and how quickly businesses can move around.
Yeah.
That's a very.
And we've certainly piloted that ourselves along San Pedro Street, for example, where we had. So it's something we're very familiar with. I see Rosen and Nancy nodding their heads. So certainly, I think there's a lot of opportunity here. I just hate for us to say we're going to give up on ground-floor activation. Obviously, we'd love the tax revenue. We really want the people.
Yeah, but I would, I would say there is the move to do more live work, and, you know, within that structure, which does have some activity. Another idea that's been popping up more is POPOs, privately-owned, public-open space that does activate during the day, but does, it will close at night, but most probably, depending on the requirements. But it does provide an urban oasis for people, that I think is really important. And I think in your downtown, you don't, maybe could use some more of those, those really great, you know, POPO spaces that some of them could become. So I think there are some creative uses that will provide activation, but not necess, and can be accompanied by a coffee shop or whatever else that's in there, whether it's a pop-up or not, that can activate without doing retail.
Childcare is in high demand, and we would love to put childcare in our buildings. And I think childcare providers can actually pay rent. Problem is the state requirements for the open space.
Yeah.
If we can figure out a way to do urban infill childcare.
Right.
I think we all benefit from that.
Right. Essentially, you need to go carve out a bunch of space out of your surface-level parking lot to have kids run around safely somehow. Right, understood. Okay, appreciate those are challenges that are not easy to solve.
I might just add that, you know, Mid-Penn has, I think, six communities where we have a childcare center on the ground floor. Communities like Redwood City that actually have a fee generator to build new childcare that can help contribute as a source, it's a useful mechanism that you might want to consider.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, we've been trying this on a couple of projects to try to get affordable projects to bite. I think we've got two, is that right?
Yes, we, we actually, in our most recent notice of funding availability, we have three affordable developments that include childcare.
Okay, well, that's really promising. Thank you, Rachel. All right, well, thank you, everybody. Very helpful, informative. Okay, so now we should go to staff, is that right? Okay, Nancy?
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Nancy Klein, Office of Economic Development, Cultural Affairs. Just a big thank you from us, too, to the panel. Very experienced, very knowledgeable, and very excited that a lot of the conversations that the panel is speaking about, whether it be PQP, or driving the processes that allow affordable first or only on certain properties. Many or most of the things that the panel mentioned, the city, at the mayor and council's leadership, are already engaged in. As we turn to the staff presentation, what Jared and Rachel will be doing is providing highlights of the report that covers the cost of residential development, both market rate and affordable. And the messages from the report, and that you've read, are consistent with the themes you've heard from the panel. Residential development right now is challenging. And the city, as you heard, does not have control of the major factors. There are pieces that we do have control over, and some of that is even difficult, like hiring and keeping employees to make things go faster. So there are also additional staff-identified effects or projects that we believe could have significant impact, that practically, though, will impact in the mid-to-longer term, aside from some of the incentive things that we're already speaking about. So with that, Jared and Rachel will have more to share about the report that was completed.
Thanks, Nancy. So just to start with some background, in April of 2018, the city council held a study session, received the first cost of development report. The first report came as staff was developing the housing crisis work plan that would later be approved in June of 2018. And the housing crisis work plan included an ongoing work item to update the cost of residential development on a regular basis. The results of the first report suggested new residential development was challenged in most areas of the city. However, new residential development in West San Jose was found to be feasible, and development in downtown and North San Jose yielded positive returns, but those returns were marginal and potentially insufficient to attract investment. In 2019, an updated report was presented to the city council. This report found similar results as to the previous, suggesting that development remained feasible in West San Jose, and development in downtown and North San Jose remained marginal. The most significant barrier at that time identified was the cost of construction. The 2019 report also included it, included an analysis of affordable housing for the first time. The report looked at the average cost of construction for affordable units in San Jose compared to other cities, utilizing data submitted to the state by projects receiving tax credit financing. Entering 2020, staff intended to update the report in conjunction with its continued work on the housing crisis work plan. However, the work was delayed by the pandemic. The work to update this current study was initiated in early 2022 with the, with the city's consultant, Century Urban. So as, first panel, we talked about quite a bit. The continued updates are important to the city, and as a tool to help us continue to understand the barriers to new housing construction. The updates provide a deeper understanding of the factors, both outside and within the city's control, that impact the feasibility of residential development. These factors can contribute to our ability to deliver on our housing goals. Factors within the city's control include impact fees, construction taxes, and the permitting approval process for projects. Factors outside the city's control relate to the economic conditions, such as the cost of construction and interest rates, among others. Understanding all of these factors can help inform our policy decisions relating to housing production. As was the case in the previous iterations, the report is based on conceptual prototypes. These are not actual developments, but reflect typical characteristics of recent multifamily development in the city. The data and assumptions for specific projects are not available to the city. Developers generally treat this information as proprietary and do not share it with the city or with the public. The report looks at market rate rental and for-sale multifamily in three different prototypes. A five-story low-rise building, a seven-story mid-rise building, and a 22-story high-rise. It is important to distinguish between these types, as each requires a different type of construction that affects cost. It is important to distinguish between these types, as each requires a different type of construction that affects costs. These prototypes are then analyzed in several different areas of the city to test for feasibility. The results of the report are shown as residual land values. As a reminder from the panel's presentation, residual land value refers to the amount of value remaining to purchase land once all other costs have been accounted for at a complete construction. This includes hard costs, which is the materials and labor to construct, soft costs, which include taxes, city fees, and design costs, then a return on investment. A positive residual value indicates the amount of development could pay for land and still be considered feasible. A residual value that is zero or negative indicates a development that is infeasible, as there is no remaining value to purchase land. Fortunately, the results of our updated analysis show all residual values as negative in the prototypes tested. These values are shown on a per-unit basis. These values mean that no prototype was shown to be feasible. The negative values indicate that even if land were available at no cost, the development would still not be feasible. The results show an extremely challenging market in the current conditions for multifamily housing in San Jose. The report's findings are validated through the recent experience of the city shown in our building permit data. This chart shows recent multifamily development with over 50 units since 2020. There were two developments that started early in 2020, and then through the pandemic, only one project per year has started construction. The second chart here provides more context, looking back to 2015 at the number of units per calendar year in projects over 50 units. You can see the downward trend starting to some extent in 2019, likely related to construction costs, and then the substantial drop in 2020 through today. The cost of construction remains a significant barrier. This chart shows the cost per unit for the mid-rise prototype in West San Jose. In 2018 and 2019, the results suggested that this, this prototype was feasible. However, the significant increases in cost have made it infeasible today. An index provided to the city by our consultant that tracks construction costs in the Bay Area has shown a 17% increase since the start of the pandemic through the second quarter of 2022. Additionally, since that time, interest rates have continued to add further challenges to the cost of new construction. Rent growth, another, the other side of the equation is important as well. Rents dropped at the start of the pandemic and did not fully recover in San Jose until spring of 2022. Rent goes since the pandemic has started is estimated at 5%, which is not sufficient to mass, match the increases in the cost of construction over that time in San Jose. The largest component of the city added cost to development are impact fees and construction taxes. Based on the costs of the prototypes in the analysis, these costs represent 5.5% to 10% of the total cost per unit. These numbers are marginal compared to the overall cost of the unit, but they still add costs and contribute to infeasibility. Reduction of these taxes and fees to $0 in the current environment would not fundamentally change the outcome of the analysis. However, staff believes it is important to understand the cost implications of all policy decisions in the near term, and that no new costs be added to construction that would further contribute to infeasibility. And with that, I'll hand it to Rachel.
Thank you, Jared. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Again, this is Rachel Van Arveen, Deputy Director of the Housing Department. The second study completed by Century Urban is the Affordable Housing Development Cost Study. As the cost of construction rises for all residential development, affordable housing is impacted along the way. Actual costs for affordable housing development are all, are available due to public documents posted by the state for any tax credit awards. So in this case, our consultant pulled actual information from 15 San Jose developments representing over 1,700 units, and compared this to 27 affordable developments throughout the state of California. Review of this information demonstrated the average per-unit cost of affordable housing in San Jose is $615,000. The average height for these developments was seven stories. This is 15% higher than developments across the state. When you break the data down further and evaluate the cost for special needs housing, the average actually grows to $700,000 per unit. This is due, this is due to the need for services base within, within the development, and also larger units. The prior study completed by Kaiser Marsden in 2019 reported the average cost for special needs units was $523,000. But in that time period, the majority of units evaluated were studios. Since that time, the city has incentivized housing for families with multiple bedrooms, and this trend continues to push the price per unit up. Also, I would like to point out that when we met with developers in person to review the results of our study now, they stated that these numbers are really looking backwards. As they look forward, they're seeing that costs are nearing $900,000 per unit in San Jose. So I just want to state that, again, these costs are just growing almost daily. Next slide, please. There are general trends that continue to provide pressure on the cost for affordable housing development. First, the construction costs have increased each year by 6%. Second, the recent increase in inflation rates have significantly impacted affordable housing development costs. As described by Nevada in the prior presentation, many affordable housing developments have five and six funding sources, and can take two to three years just to secure all the funds. This in itself adds cost to the project. And third, San Jose has continued to prioritize funding for our most vulnerable residents, and this deepens the affordability and results in higher costs as well. Next slide, please. As a part of the housing crisis work plan discussion, this, oh, sorry. The study also considered the cost of development in other jurisdictions across California. Overall, the average cost was 15% higher than in, of, than other affordable developments in other parts of our, our state. The reasons identified for this include the priority for deeper affordability. The direct construction costs are actually higher in San Jose due to a shortage in construction labor force and our prevailing wage requirements. Also, impact fees in San Jose actually averaged $12,000 per unit versus $7,800 in other communities. And finally, San Jose has higher financing costs. As projects become more complex, the cost of finance also increase. So as a part of the housing crisis work plan discussion, which is coming up in just two weeks, the city is planning on bringing forward a recommendation to increase the per-unit subsidy, which has been stably $125,000 per unit for over four years now. The reason for this increase is, is really twofold. The increased cost of development is the first, and second, the reality that the county's Measure A funds are now being quickly depleted. Considering all of the factors that we have talked about today, it is just clear we need to seriously consider strategies to reduce cost. It will, it will take multiple actions all at the same time in order to achieve this goal. And we want to engage this challenge and work with you together to find ways to manage this problem. And now I'd like to turn it back to Jared.
As Rachel mentioned, at the November 15th city council meeting, there will be several policy items related to this report. This includes our, an update on the housing crisis work plan, and also recommendations on the future of the city's downtown high-rise residential program. There are also other future policy actions planned in 2023, including consideration of a construction tax reduction for affordable housing, as was discussed with the council earlier in 2022. This is important now, given the analysis that we just discussed in the report that showed San Jose with higher per-unit fees for affordable housing units than in other jurisdictions. Additionally, the development fee framework is intended to better align our most significant impact fees and taxes to allow for easier calculation and administration. Staff plans to bring forward a council policy and other changes to memorialize the components of the development fee framework in the fall of 2023. Overall, the report shows that new housing construction, especially in the near term, is significantly challenged due to factors outside the city's control. In the longer term, staff has included two significant strategies in the proposed updated housing element to help speed up the approval of new housing. This includes creation of a city ministerial approval ordinance that would allow housing projects meeting specific criteria to be approved without a hearing through a ministerial process. Projects utilizing this process would not be subject to CEQA review, as ministerial approvals are not defined as projects in CEQA statute. Additionally, the other strategy is to conduct program-level CEQA analysis for approved urban village plans. This would help shorten the approval process by reducing the amount of environmental analysis required for individual projects. This approach has been a successful component of the city's downtown strategy. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Representatives from the city's consultant, Century Urban, are also available via Zoom if there are specific questions related to the report. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the hard work, and I know we're going to be considering some of that work next week, and hopefully we'll move forward quickly. Thank you. Let's go to the public, and then we'll come back to the council questions and comments.
Do you have caller 1324? Caller 123, or 1324?
Yes, this is a, yes, this is Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. It's very rare that I hear people lie as much as I did today. But these are lies. This is a propaganda tool. For those of you that don't know how to identify what propaganda is, what you just heard is propaganda. Okay, because the only time that I have heard people lie, as much as I heard today, is when a lawyer is talking or when a politician is talking. And this city just happens to have both in their mayor. So that means we're lied to a lot. I mean, a lot, okay? Market rate housing needs to be capped at 50%. Why? Because all that has been happening is market rate housing goals have been met constantly, year after year. 15%, 95% to 115%. ELI, BLI, bottom. That's number one. Number two is, what this is, is a tool by developers to try to normalize giving them tax breaks. We already gave the dudes 9 million, and then we gave you 4 million. Uh-uh. I don't want no more tax breaks. I did hear an argument, though, about repealing Prop 13. That I did hear. I heard that loud and clear, okay? But developers are the problem. Why? Because developing is what created San Jose. Manifest Destiny was about land takeovers and coveting and exploiting this land. And this land has not been healed from that start point, okay? You can throw a rock anywhere in the city and make money with the land. But the land has never been, the, the land has never been healed from the decapitations of Native Americans, and that is the foundation.
Aaron?
Hi, my name is Aaron Akos. I'm the Regional Policy Manager at California YIMBY. Really glad that San Jose is looking at this issue. I think the report that's been presented today represents kind of a disaster for San Jose. If new housing is not feasible anywhere in the city, that's a huge crisis, and I think it needs a commensurate policy response. A couple of things I noticed that are interesting, I have questions about. One, really glad that the city is looking at streamlining the approval process and using ministerial approval as a way to address this issue. I do think that indicates the need to move the timeline for that up. I think in the housing element, it's currently proposed to not happen until 2026 or 2027. And based on this report, we need it sooner. I'm also curious about moderate density development in the city. So there was a report that the city commissioned a year or two ago that indicated, from Optico, indicated that six to eight plexes are financially feasible in much of San Jose and would potentially produce housing affordable to middle-income households. So I'm curious if staff and the consultants think that report is still accurate? And if so, does that indicate a possible policy response to help enable housing in more of San Jose? And then I think I, I'm also just sort of curious about the idea that some of the higher costs we saw here were about Bay Area-specific factors in the Affordable Housing Report, given the fact that most of the comparison cities were also in the Bay Area. Generally, though, I think this is a huge problem. We need a policy response. Not just looking at fees, but at zoning, permitting, the building code. All of that needs to be considered.
Jean Dresden?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council members. My name is Jean Dresden. This financial analysis provides guidance towards a system of many solutions and reaffirms that fee cuts alone don't work. Complex solutions are needed, including using new legislation and the pro-housing designation elements that bring federal and state dollars. Yesterday, Turner released their new dashboard models showing the significantly greater impact of strategies other than fee cuts, and they modeled synergistic effects. However, the council must focus staff on completing the housing element as its greatest priority, so that state and federal financing does not in, and the fewest number of builders' remedy projects are submitted. The city must look at downtown beyond fee cuts. Gensler's research shows that the city must provide the staffing needed to help public life businesses rebuild and fully fund the reinvigoration of the downtown public plazas and parks that are needed to attract the knowledge workers to retain and stay and pay full market rate that attracts equity investors. Importantly, park fees have not increased since 2017, and inflation impacts have reduced their value by more than 35%, a silent discount. Initiatives such as converting NCC sites to mixed-use should be considered, but all should be prioritized through the lens of number of units built and the lack of planning staff available to do the work.
Brian?
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Brian Pores with UA Local 393, representing thousands of San Jose plumbers, pipe fitters, steam fitters, HVACR service technicians, and our families. Today, I'm here to impress the importance of skilled and trade labor, labor being part of this conversation and our future in San Jose. In 2018, Working Partnerships produced a study that documented the cost to our community due to the low-road development model that dominates private, private development, particularly in residential construction. It should outrage every member of this council that little has changed since then. The report told you that over half, 54% specifically, of blue-collar construction workers employed in the Santa Clara County earn less than $40,000 per year with few or no benefits. Non-union contractors also are the key players when it comes to wage theft, misclassification, and unsafe work conditions. More importantly, it depletes the economic development during and after the project. Workers who are brought in from outside will not buy local, do not reside local, and all the while, push out our local skilled and trained workers. The report also noted that Latino and African-American construction workers are paid 38% less than white workers on average. Therefore, to ensure our future is being built in a responsible manner, that pay fair wages with fair conditions, I ask that your staff provide alternatives to fee waivers that include employing our local skilled and trained workforce. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Louise Auerhahn?
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Louise Auerhahn, Working Partnerships. And my comments today will focus on the consultant study that was commissioned and on the downtown high-rise subsidy that's planned to come back in two weeks. So that subsidy for downtown high-rise developers was first pitched as a temporary stimulus to help jumpstart downtown development during the Great Recession. That was around 2009. Since then, it's been extended over and over. Since then, it's been extended over and over and over for thirteen years. And every time it's been promised, this is just temporary, this is because of market conditions, and every time it's promised, we'll find another way to make up for the affordable housing. And so far, every time that promise has been broken. At this point, well over a hundred million in subsidies has been granted through this program, maybe much more. I've never seen the city provide a cumulative total. But we keep trying the same approach over and over again, putting more and more into these subsidies and it's not working. It's not working to produce housing that's affordable for our neighborhoods. We're woefully behind our affordable housing goals. It's not working to produce good jobs. Four years after council voted in 2018 to attach workforce standards to subsidies, nothing's been done. And from the consultant report we just saw, every type of development, including those subsidized high-rises, is now infeasible. So it doesn't look like it's working to spur development either. So if we've been doing this over and over again for thirteen years, and this is where it's gotten us, isn't it time to step back and try something new? But this consultant study, if you read the paragraph on page three legislative background, it was prepared with the specific purpose of providing findings to support a continued fee and tax reduction. So this study didn't look at other solutions. The panel was very refreshing and I'd urged the city to consider.
Mondo?
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, City Council. I am at Mundo Scarsega. I'm with UA Local 393, representing thousands of San Jose plumbers, pipe fitters, steam fitters, and HVACR technicians and their families. Today, I'm here to impress the importance of skilled and trained labor being a part of this conversation and our future here in San Jose. The report in front of you today accepts racial disparities by accepting as a matter of fact, that developers will build into their pro formas a bidding process that results in the use of low-road contractors that, that in our area have already been proven to exploit out-of-town workers. Let's be clear. Residential investors seeking a fifteen to twenty percent return exploiting San Jose's construction workforce has become an acceptable method for them to compete for that capital. This is a matter of choice for the developers, not because the cost of construction here demands it. It's simply a choice to put profit over people. That's profit over our local workforce, profit over safety, profit over our community's future. To allow for reduced fees and tax breaks without addressing the harm done to thousands of construction workers is simply wrong. Your staff, your staff should apply alternative strategies to encouraging the rapid construction of residential projects. They're out there. Additionally, we believe reduction, we believe reductions of fees and taxes should trigger a prevailing wage requirement. You should have your legal counsel make a determination on this concern. Thank you very much.
Eric?
Good evening, Mayor Licardo, members of the council. This is Eric Shaneauer. I just wanted to note that some people are arguing to the council that this report was done during the pandemic and therefore it is invalid and should not be relied upon to make policy decisions. So I just want to emphasize the fact that the city has completed two prior cost of development reports, one in 2018, the other in 2019. And both of those reports pretty much came to the same conclusion prior to the pandemic. In addition, housing production has, in San Jose, has been extremely anemic. The city is under-producing housing even before the pandemic. Let me give you some numbers. You could write them down. In 2018, the city issued building permits for two thousand nine hundred and seventy-three units. In 2019, the city issued building permits for two thousand six hundred and sixty-three units. Put that in context. Your stated city council goal is to generate five thousand units per year. That didn't happen in 2018 or 2019. The next RENA cycle requires the city in aggregate to produce eight thousand three hundred units per year continuously for eight years. Well, how are you going to get to that RENA requirement of eight thousand three hundred units per year when in San Jose, before the pandemic, the city was only generating twenty-eight hundred units per year average? So there needs to be major course correction and needle-moving revisions to city policy if we're going to have enough housing. Thank you.
Oscar?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Oscar Castro, Director of Housing and Transportation Justice at Working Partnerships USA. I would like to take this opportunity to both reaffirm the comments provided by my colleague Louise Auerhahn and add further valuable pieces, pieces to this discussion as we look to combat the numerous impacts that are stemmed from this housing crisis. As we look to propose some solutions to address obstacles to constructions, there must also be a form of accountability in place that San Jose is continuing to meet their housing goals of all income levels. Inbounds production of housing at the sake of deeper levels of affordability will only result in further income inequality and further heighten the risk of displacement that is taking place throughout the city. In addition, the ULI presentation made mention of modifying forms to tenant protections for the sake of new development. At this current juncture, any modifications to existing tenant protections should be structured in a way that would further support tenants, not add to the extreme vulnerability that renters have faced over the past couple of years. Through this comprehensive study and presentation, there may be more questions and answers as to how we both address hurdles towards production and ensure that we are doing so in an equitable manner, in an equitable manner, excuse me, for the betterment of all residents in San Jose. We look forward for the opportunity to further discuss and contemplate solutions to ensure that we are genuinely addressing this issue while taking all impacts into consideration. Thank you very much.
Jeffrey?
Yes, thank you very much. First of all, as Pam Foley said, this was a masterclass and I, I want to thank Rosalind Huey and Nancy Klein and the ULI team for really doing a great job at a comprehensive time. A couple of things that I just want to have the, take into consideration. The recent experience in Florida, Hurricane Ian, we saw devastation of a number of homes here in California not far from us. We've lost during the period of time that Eric Shanahan was referring to where we barely met the two thousand house per year. That wasn't even a target. We barely were able to create two thousand homes per year. We lost over thirty thousand homes in the North Bay due to wildland fire. These are, these are types of problems that we're going to face in the future from flooding, from fire, earthquake and other events. So I'd like to take a page from the Babcock Ranch experiment in Fort Myers and see how we can also focus on sustainable development of housing as well and not forget that element. And thank you for a great report. I look forward to the fifteenth. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Great, thank you. All right. Council hasn't had an opportunity to ask any questions after the staff report. So, Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for all of the different presentations today, since I didn't ask questions before. I appreciate that detailed analysis and seeing the details in that analysis kind of makes me wonder if we're being too limited in our thinking in the other part of the analysis about what the actions we should take are. I appreciate that this does sound like an urgent problem that we should deal with. On the other hand, I'm, I'm a bit loathe to make urgent decisions for the long term when we're in a, in the, what looks like a very poor economic situation that could be very short-term. We don't really know, obviously, but, um, you know, I've been taught not to make investment in other decisions right at, right at a, at a moment of highest interest rates, low market, all the things that are just right now kind of a perfect storm. So I just want to kind of ask questions about whether we might want to put the brakes on it a little bit to understand what the trends are and what's going to happen and what really are the levers that are going to be most impactful. You know, we're, we're just coming out of the pandemic, which obviously had an effect. There were supply chain issues that obviously had an effect. So I'm concerned about, at this very moment, making what could be a decision that impacts other services we can provide as a city. I don't know if anybody wants to weigh in on any of that. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm asking the question about whether, you know, what's the, what's the urgency of this, bringing this back in two weeks? What parts of it are definitely urgent, which parts are not? What other levers should we be considering? So anyway, I'll, I'll kind of leave it open at that.
So a lot of the decisions we were mentioning were really longer-term. I mean, the downtown high-rise program piece is obviously the, the more near term, but it is a little bit urgent right now because the, the program, the, the projects have to complete construction by June of 2025. And so really the window is, is really closed for that. They really need to start now or very soon to kind of meet that timeline. So if, if there isn't a decision to extend that program, the effect would be an increase in fees on those, those housing projects. And so I think we feel like it's important not to be adding to, to cost to, to development right now based on the results from the, the study.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, I see that there's a short-term piece to your recommendation, um, at least based on what I've seen as a preview, but there's also some, some longer-term pieces to the recommendation as well that I'm a little more uncomfortable with at this point. So I just want to kind of throw that out there now and, and we have some time to think about it between now and, and the fifteenth.
Councilmember, may I ask, is there any more specificity so we can know exactly what you're thinking about?
Well, I mean, I, I think I saw from a, from a preview that, that I, discussion that I had with you separately about the, the high-rise inclusionary fees for 2020, for two more years, basically. It's a two-year extension on that. Is that right? It's two or two and a half year extension?
Yeah, about two and, two and a half.
Two and a half year extension. But there was an additional decision in there about inclusionary housing through 2032 or 33. I forget the exact details.
Yeah, so part of the thinking, and this goes back to kind of the panel's discussion about certainty, you know, and the, the near term versus the long term. And so just, you know, so in the, in the near term, providing that certainty to those developments that might move forward. And then in the long term, signaling to the market where we might be headed in terms of their requirements moving forward. And so messaging that now and having that in place is important. So as they're, as we're emerging from, you know, the, the economic conditions now, you know, they can make plans to accommodate the requirements or fees that we're, we're asking for. So that, that's sort of the thinking in, in where we're going. We can talk more about it at the, the council meeting and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned that the analysis we're basing this on is an analysis that says, no matter what we do, nothing's feasible anywhere. So I'm just, I, I just want to understand how that kind of jives with the decisions that we're making. I understand that we're hoping that things, conditions are going to improve. We're hoping that people will do what Vice Mayor Jones suggests, which is not overreacted at the current time and understand that if there's long-term profitability to building, that that should at some point exist again and that people aren't going to completely shut down their work. But I, I'm, I just, I guess I'm, after the presentation we heard here, I'm a little uncomfortable, given that we heard how complex this is, how many levers there are, how many things. I'm not completely convinced that we've done the analysis that tells us that this is the right thing to do at the right time. I guess I'm just, put that out there.
Councilmember and Mayor Council, I, I just wanted to pop in. I, from staff's point of view, obviously, we're, we're Jennifer's and the council's pleasure. Right now, there may be a few projects or a limited number of projects that would go. And if we, in effect, make it yet more costly, they really won't be able to go. So to your point about with everything going on, why do it now? Because in conversations that we have with key developers, they are going to try to go. And Drew mentioned that there are outliers that may want to take a big action in order to impact the market overall. So that is what we're hoping to, to make feasible because they are on the bubble.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. One of the things that I've been wondering about since I saw the preview and this presentation today is, and I think I asked this question, but we didn't really have the details. Is it possible to do a height sensitivity analysis to understand, you know, what, you know, we have twenty-two stories, but what does the analysis look like as we change that number? I know that we haven't done that analysis, but is there a way to do that analysis?
Drew or one of the panel, maybe you want to?
Yeah, I, I can help a little bit. And I apologize, I'm going to have to leave in just a moment or two. It's actually my daughter's sixteenth birthday today. Need to get home for that. But I think part of the reason the, the analysis looked at five, seven, twenty-two, there, there was a little bit of magic there. Wood frame buildings, type five can typically be built in five stories and are associated with one level of cost. Once you get higher than that, you're into type three wood construction, which has a greater cost per square foot, but you can get greater density. So there's a trade-off there. And we did a project in downtown we call the Pierce, which appears to be eight stories, but it's, you know, two of concrete, five of wood, and the very, very top level have loft mezzanine spaces. So there's not an elevator stop at that highest level. That's the extreme that you can do with wood construction. So seven stories nominally, eight if you do that mezzanine. And then everything above that would be type one, which is yet more expensive. And you have to get much taller than eight stories typically to start to make type one.
Right, yeah, and I understand that. I guess I'm also thinking about within the type one, what's the sensitivity analysis? I mean, if it were twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty, you know, in other words, I know we have height limitations in certain parts of our city. Obviously, we're dealing with that. We, we have places where we don't, maybe don't have the same height limitations. And of course, I'm always interested in North San Jose, but what, what, can we get some information about what happens as we get above twenty-two as well? Because this tells us, hey, five's not going to happen, seven's not going to happen, twenty-two's not going to happen. But there might be some height at which it could happen and I'm curious to know what that would be.
And, and that is a legitimate question. It's unfortunate, it's called super high-rise. Then you have to have another core. Again, each, each height is all driven by firelife safety. The higher you go, the more dangerous. So there is a whole nother layer you can analyze where you get to super high-rise, but then it adds more, more inefficiency and cost.
Maybe a similar answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, we, we've framed it around the twenty-two story because, you know, as downtown, the heights are limited and that's what we, we've seen because of the airport. So we, we could look at higher heights. I was also thinking we could, we have the consultant on the line too, that they might be willing to add a little bit of context here too about adding, adding more height. I don't know if, if one of them wants to, to respond also. They may have some thoughts.
Well, maybe not. It's okay, oh, go ahead.
Here we go.
Yeah, go ahead. This is good crap. Consultants that did the report, I think the comments that have been made are really accurate, that as you go up, the costs get higher and that continues as you go up higher. At some point, it flattens out, but you have to take into account the additional cost when considering the, you know, additional feasibility you get from having more dense housing.
Right, I guess I'm, yeah, I mean, I feel, obviously it gets more expensive the more you build, but it also denser, the more payoff. So they get, so presumably there's a curve of height to cost, to payback, not necessarily the cost, cost will go up, but height to the residual or whatever the, you know, measure we want to use is. I just, I, so.
I'm sorry, I, I just to follow up on Jake's comment. Yeah, there is a point where the costs do start flattening out in terms of the height. We would have to run some analysis to determine where that is so that with the additional residential, you do start seeing an increase in value or, or less negative residual value because your costs are starting to flatten out. But we'd have to run some analysis to determine at what height that would occur.
Okay, thank you. Just sort of back to the main point and then I'll wrap it up. I'm, you know, given that nothing's, just given this is saying that really nothing's feasible right now and we're going to have to make some adjustments. We think some things might happen. I'm also concerned about saying, well, we're going to do this, we're going to, we're going to push through some, some, or extend what we have going on in downtown to make down some downtown projects feasible without thinking about what, how we're going to make sure that the projects that we have in the pipeline in other parts of the city are going to happen as well. I just want to throw that out there. I'm not sure we have an answer at this moment, but, you know, we, we've approved some projects in other parts of the city. Are they going to get built? I don't know. We've also certainly want to get moving soon, hopefully on North San Jose. And I want to make sure that we are thoughtful about what levers we're going to use. I know parking is one. I, I really look, you know, look forward to that conversation. But as I saw, I just, I guess it's back to when I saw the presentation, my, my takeaway was this is very complicated and we have a lot of levers and we should really understand what levers are going to have the most impact. And I also want us to be, um, consider, consider the, geez, I lost my train of thought. But anyway, I, you know, I just want to make sure that, that. anyway, I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not so wedded to one type of solution, that we're not looking holistically at all of, you know, at all of the possible levers. I also think it's really important that, and I know this is partly a staffing issue, but there's procedural things as well, that approvals and planning is really important as well, timelines, to make sure that we're getting things done as efficiently as possible through whatever means we have to try to empower developers who are some of the repeat developers, for example, who keep coming back, but we're still, but we, but our process makes it very onerous. So I think we ought to be, you know, I think we ought to be focused on some of these big procedural issues as well as we try to encourage more development in the city. So I think I'll just leave it that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the council, see, we've just about had time. I don't see any of the hands. Let me just offer a couple of thoughts. You know, Councilmember Cohen makes a good point that there are other levers. Some of those levers we've pulled. I mean, parking, we've eliminated the minimum. So if that's the big lever, we've pulled it. There are others we're still working on, and I know, as Jared described, we've got process improvements coming. That will hopefully expedite approvals. If the council is willing to do so, and I think there's going to probably be some community pushback on some of that around making these decisions ministerial, for example, it's going to take some courage to push forward. But I really think this conversation needs to be an and, and not an or. We got to do all these things because it's not even a close question for most of these projects as to whether or not they're feasible. We know that what we're looking at is a median or mean picture, but we know the only thing that is going forward are the ones that are really the extreme situations. Maybe they have a very unique source of funding, like a pension fund, or maybe a sovereign fund with very patient money. Maybe they don't pay taxes like if it's CalPERS or somebody. And those are just very unique circumstances, and that's just not where most of the market is in terms of financing. And so I think the reality is, all we can hope to do is maybe get one or two out of the ground. We're talking about downtown, if that. I think it's probably going to be a long time before we see another. It's already been since 2017, since we've seen a groundbreaking in downtown. So that's half a decade in the middle of what was perhaps the greatest economic boon this valley has ever seen. In the heart of this valley, we've seen zero high-rises break ground in a half decade, while other cities, Seattle, LA, all throughout the country have seen many dozens. I think we counted 68 cranes in the air in Seattle at one time, at a time we had, I think, one or two. So it's not as though it's a close question here. It's a, we are, we don't need to measure the distance to the wall to know we need to jump toward it. We've got to do some jumping because we're just a long way off, and I think we've seen the housing development over the last three or four years, and the numbers are really, even before the pandemic, 2019, the housing costs were clearly killing us. And I know that there are members of our building trades who advocate strongly, as they often do, and that, yes, they should absolutely be at the table in these conversations. But the suggestion was, for example, that, you know, if we're going to reduce costs, then we ought to have things like local hire. So let me ask, Drew, you develop both affordable and market rate housing. I know you use labor and non-union, I'm sorry, union, non-union labor. Tell us what local hire is going to do to costs.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, everything around labor is a sensitive subject. Specific to, you know, our experience, we have built non-union projects or open shop. We have built prevailing wage projects, and we have built union projects. Local hire is even a separate policy. It just tends to decrease the pool of contractors that you can go to. And so anytime you're decreasing that pool, you're decreasing the competition, and it allows those that qualify within that pool to, you know, with less, with less competition to bid less aggressively.
So what happens to your costs?
The costs go up.
Okay.
And I can point to an experience in a San Mateo County city where a direct policy question, we were buying land from a successor agency post redevelopment. Effectively, the city council and the successor agency were the same group of people, as often happens. And we are currently building a 100% union project, and we're very proud to do it. We're building it with pension fund money from the unions, but that's not what drove that decision. And in the final council hearing, when the land price was being determined, there was an open transparency that said, we could pay much more for the land with an open shop construction, or we can pay less for the land with union construction. And the carpenters' union and the MEP unions were in the room with us. They were supporting us, and they spoke for our project. But right before the vote, the mayor of that town made a very clear point to say to the union representatives, we are making a policy decision to support you, and we are taking less money for the land so that you can make the wages that you're making and that you can support the causes you support.
Right.
And it's a choice. And like every policy choice we've talked about today, there are costs and benefits.
And that's a good thing for a city to do, many cases, when the city owns the land. But I think we know private development in our city doesn't happen on city-owned land. I think the only city-owned land we use to build housing for the most is basically affordable housing that is 100% affordable that we're using. So in a world where you don't have a city willing to reduce the price of land, how does that affect the viability of construction?
Well, again, it's a cost question, and it's a policy question to the council as to, if you recognize that that is a cost benefit analysis, you have to make a collective choice as to which policy you support.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And I do need to leave, but I have a lot of.
Yeah, you got to leave. Yeah, you got to go see your daughter. So have fun. Wish her happy birthday for all of us.
I'll make one comment on this, because we wrestle with in San Francisco. We do mostly everything all-union. It's not the labor rates themselves that we pay the union laborers. It's because they're a smaller pool of contractors. So what they mark up, what the subcontractor companies are actually making versus what we're paying the laborers, that's where it becomes less competitive. If we could control the markup in the market, I think it'd be less impactful if we're always using union labor.
Thank you. And I've heard similar comments from others who are required to use prevailing wage, that there is a difference whether they're constrained in that way or not, that even if everybody's getting paid prevailing wage, that the issue isn't what the laborers are getting paid or the carpenters. It's this diminished pool of subcontractors and what kind of rates they're getting. Yeah.
This is an area where regional advocacy, I think, can really help the city. So this, you know, labor was probably until this past year, the number one reason why very few housing laws went through at the state level. They effectively stopped all the conversations there. And we had a few that went through this year, SB 6 and AB 2011. So we'll see how those play out. But I really hope to see the state legislature support labor and try to find some ways so that we can really get at the heart of this issue, which is that there are not necessarily enough workers in the right places for some of these policies to really make sense. We work in 11 counties, and the situation is drastically different in Sonoma and Santa Cruz than it is here. So I think that there needs to be some investment at the state level, and hopefully, we can see a little bit of progress if we work together.
Agreed, and I certainly welcome a convening by ULI about how we can expand our construction and labor pool here in the region.
Will this be at your service ad nauseam?
I think your agenda's filled up through 2025. Too bad I won't be in office, but, all right, any other comments before we wrap up? Last question?
I did want to go back and just follow up. I remembered the question I was going to ask, but also something else was triggered by the mayor's comment about Seattle versus San Jose. So let me just understand, I mean, there's obviously differences. And are all the differences now between building in places like Seattle versus San Jose, construction costs, land costs? Those are the two big differences? So, okay, sequel costs. So we ought to do some advocacy to try to fix that problem as well. I mean, there's other solutions to this, obviously not immediate, but there are solutions to this. So the question I was going to ask was, we were talking about, I know this goes against that whole comment about certainty a little bit, but we're talking about developed projects that may happen if we were to give some of this cost reduction in some way. You know, given this menu of things we can do, I wonder whether it makes sense to work with developers to say, what are the things on this menu of things that will make this project affordable for you, and work on a case-by-case basis during this particularly challenging time, as opposed to creating long, you know, any kind of blanket policy that we have to then make projects fit under? Is this something that is possible so that we could say, hey, you know, what if we, what if in this case, there's no parking, but in this case, we're going to waive these fees? And in this, because different projects may have different levers that affect their costs.
Nancy Klein, thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Please know that a lot of what, much of what we're recommending comes as a result of not only the economics, but being deeply engaged with the developers.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm just, you know, I think being creative and nimble is going to be important during this time, and so I just want to throw that also, bring that up as a possibility, because I'm, again, I'm hesitant to make decisions that might not be the right ones in two years. But I'm completely aware of our desire to get projects built and want to make sure we find the best way to do that.
The only thing I would add to that is that whatever you do on an individual basis, you need to make sure it's fair to all the actors in the development community, because once developers perceive that it's not fair, then they're not likely going to do repeat business here.
I just wanted to add, too, the importance of having this report regularly kind of gives you the check-in and ability to know what the conditions are to kind of make those decisions regularly, right? So that you're not necessarily always making these long-term things, not having kind of a third-party check on what the realities are, right?
Maybe I could just add one point there, that I think in the affordable kind of ecosystem, that that's very common, that you see on a deal-by-deal basis, a lot of this public sector flexibility. When I have a chance to kind of engage with other cities about why to codify some of this, it just speaks to staff time and that many of the, on the affordable side, these innovations that we've come up with, it would just help other projects move more quickly so that you don't end up having to have really complicated development agreements of all. However you structure these agreements, they take time, they take an attorney, they take sometimes a year to hammer it out. So I think if we can kind of land upon some of the broad, the ones that apply most broadly, that I think it can end up cutting back on that time, the negotiation time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of time, thank you for being so generous with your time and lending your expertise to us. All right, I think we have exhausted all the questions. So we will now recess. I'm told that there's no open forum for this portion because it's a study session. We will go forward to the rest of the council agenda shortly. So for fans at home, that means we'll be resuming at 6 o'clock as scheduled on the agenda, and everyone have a nice break.